If we'll be abstaining, I'll open the morning thinking. On behalf of the Swan Hill Rural City Council, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians on the land on which we mate. I pay our respects to their elders, past and present. The councillor, Kelly, for the prayer.
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Amen. Please be seated. All right, we've got all the faces around the room, so there's no apologies. Directors and officers present, we have Mr Scott Barber, the CEO, sitting next to me, Mr Barna Pratap, Director of Corporate Services, Miss Heather Green, Director of Development and Planning, Leah Johnson, the Director of Infrastructure, and Bruce Myers, Director of Community and Cultural Services. Uh, what are we up to? Confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the previous minutes? Thank you, councillors. Yep, move. Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Seconded councillor King. All in favour? Carry it. Do we have any disclosure of conflict of interests? No, silence, I don't let us know. We have no joint letters in reading of petitions. We do have a public question, so can I have the motion to suspend standing orders? Thank you, councillor King. Seconded councillor Young. All in favour? Carry it. We have one question. It is from Mr Gary Norton. The question is about the safety in Werrill Street, Swan Hill, which is a residential street with a 50 km speed limit, a popular walking and cycling street that has no formal footpath. When is Swan Hill Rural City Council going to put some sort of infrastructure, e.g. volleys, islands, better signage and possible weight limits, to slow speeding cars and deter heavy transport vehicles such as V-doubles, wide loads etc, before there are any more accidents? I'll pass it on to our Director of Infrastructure to respond.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, as this is actually a road that councillors also identified is of concern due to the number of vehicles, whether that be light and heavy, that are currently using it. Traffic counts have been undertaken that have actually confirmed the high use on this particular road. The average annual daily traffic along Werrill Street is 808.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, the gallery can't hear. Would the director be able to stand up and maybe project her voice a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like me to face the background?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Stand in the side, yeah, might be the best way.
Thanks, Leah. No worries. Thank you for the question. This is a road that councillors already identified of concern due to the number of heavy and light vehicles that are currently using it. Traffic counts have actually been already undertaken on the road and that has actually confirmed that high use. The average annual daily traffic along Werrill Street is 808 on the eastern side of the Backbog Road intersection and 946 on the western side of the intersection, with around 2% of those being articulated vehicles. For information, council has actually undertaken preliminary survey and design, work on a range of concepts and alignments for the intersection of Dead Horse Lane, Werrill Street and the Backbog Road intersection. The intent of this was to deter heavy vehicles from entering Werrill Street and to direct these vehicles in a southerly direction to Backbog Road and then on to the Murray Barren Highway by Airdrome Road. However, in order to accommodate this solution with a suitable curve, land acquisition would be required, which would take an extensive amount of time in terms of acquiring the land, and it is also a very expensive solution. Due to these issues, it does not suggest progress further at this particular point in time, as it is unfunded. However, this option is still continued to be an option considered by council as a longer term solution. But other traffic calming options are now being considered. It is noted that there currently is a site at the intersection stating detour for heavy vehicles. However, it is undoubtedly or agreed that it is too small and a sign prior to this location is desirable, noting that it may not make that much of a difference as most freight and local traffic using Werrill Street would be regularly used and would be aware of the street character and the option to use the Backbog Road anyway. But that doesn't diminish that it may be helpful. Council has also considered speed humps in Werrill Street. However, these two are highly undesirable. They create a lot of road noise in a residential street. Cars accelerate, they brake, and then we hear a thud-thud over the speedhump, and then the cars accelerate away. And therefore, speedhumps in this sort of location are often considered undesirable in an urban environment due to unacceptable amenity concerns. At this time, channelising islands, dragging tarpaulin marking and pinch points are being considered. The most effective solution is still to be identified. This work is now being undertaken and will involve community engagement with adjoining property owners, noting that engagement with the freight and agriculture sector will also be key to this change. It is intended that the most appropriate solution will be identified and implemented during the 24-25 line each year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, okay, councillors, can I have a... There's no further questions, there's no open forum. Yeah, motion, motion to resume standing orders. Councillor Moore, seconded councillor Jeffrey. All in favour? Carry it. All right, the first item on the agenda is a mayoral term of office. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, everybody. I ask the councillors to please look at the recommendation that councillors elect a mayor for a term of one year and that the CEO conduct the mayoral election.
As you're well aware, councillors, you understand that it can be two years, but we're at the end of a term. We've only got one year to go. So hence, one year, that's, we've only got one option here. Councillor Kelly, you want to move the motion?
I'll move.
As per the recommendation, thank you. Seconded councillor Jeffrey. Do you wish to speak to everyone, councillor Kelly?
No.
Make it pretty straightforward. Councillor Jeffrey?
Aye.
Aye. Look, I'll put the motion, all in favour. Carry it.
I'd also like to propose a motion that standing orders are suspended at this time for the outgoing mayor's speech.
Moved councillor King. Seconded councillor Moore. All in favour? Thank you. All right. Once again, it has been an honour and a privilege to serve as the mayor of the Swan Hill Rural City Council over the past 12 months. I have been fortunate to have undertaken the role of mayor for six years of my 15 years as a councillor. As the mayor and a councillor, I am a strong advocate that we need to work in a team environment and be respectful of everyone's opinions. The role of mayor is not an easy one, and it is explained in the Local Government Act. It is a lot more than just being able to chair a meeting. The role of mayor is something that should not be shared around amongst the councillors. We should be electing the most appropriate councillor to undertake the role of mayor. I would like to thank my fellow councillors, council staff and the entire community for the support I have received during my term as mayor. I wish the incoming mayor all the best. Thank you.
Recommend we resume standing orders, please, Mr.
Yep. Moved councillor Moore. Seconded councillor King. All in favour? Carry it. Just before I hand over, there's one thing I did forget to mention at the start of the meeting before I handed over to the CEO for the young thing. Just on behalf of council, I would just like to acknowledge the passing of Richard Dwyer, who passed away late last month. He was a councillor from 1967 to 1973 and was mayor from 1970 to 71. Richard Dwyer, more affectionately known as Dick Dwyer. Everyone, I don't think many people knew his name was Richard, but it was Dick Dwyer. He was a principal in the legal firm Dwyer, Martin Robinson. So our condolences to him and his family from the council. All right, thank you. That being said, I'll hand over the CEO for the election of the mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Thank you, everybody. We'll now commence the election process for mayor 2023-24. Briefly, I'll outline the process. I'll firstly call for nominations and ask the nominee or the candidate if they accept the nomination, and if they're self-nominated, ask for a seconder. Each nominee, in order of nomination, may speak up to five minutes prior to the commencement of the election process. The election process, voting will be carried out with a clear show of hands in accordance with the council's governance rules, section 8.2, paragraph 1. So it may be seen here in the council chambers and through the electronic live stream to see who a councillor has voted for at the time the vote is taken. If we receive one nomination, that candidate will be declared elected. If we receive two nominations, we will go through an election process. Let's start the election. I call for nominations for Swan Hill Rural City Council Mayor 2023-24.
I'll have my councillor Stuart King, the position of mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, councillor King, do you accept the nomination?
I'll accept.
And I'll take that as a second. Yep. Do I hear any more nominations for mayor? Thank you. I declare that councillor King has been elected mayor of Swan Hill Rural City Council. I recommend that standing orders be suspended so the mayor can say a few words and then we'll robe the mayor.
Moved as much.
Councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank...
You want to rub the name first, do you? Whoa, whichever I want to do it.
Speak first, speak first, yes.
I want to thank everybody for this opportunity. Firstly, I want to acknowledge councillor McPhee, who has been an absolute stalwart of this council, 15 years as a councillor, six terms as mayor. I know he's had some trying times, particularly in the last 12 months personally, so I want to really acknowledge councillor McPhee for his contribution, not just to this council, but to the entire community and for his leadership, particularly through difficult times, and his mentorship with me as deputy mayor over the last 12 months. So thank you very much, councillor McPhee. Thank you, fellow councillors. Thank you, family. Thank you, friends. Thank my employees, even though they're not here because they're working. And especially the community for the support and encouragement to undertake this role. I particularly want to thank my wife as well for her support and encouragement to take this on as well. Thank you very much. It is an honour and a privilege to be elected to lead our municipality, and that honour and privilege is not lost on me, and I will do my utmost to lead, to listen and to represent the municipality and our region well, and act on behalf of all of the people that I've been elected to represent. I want to continue the great work of this council and support the staff to outwork our plan and our vision, particularly in the last 12 months of this council term. Thank you.
I call the mayor to robe the newly elected mayor councillor Stuart King.
Hello, she was there.
That was too quick. Do you want another photo?
Another shot, you need to go back again.
Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Bear with me. Can I have a motion to resume standing orders? Councillor Jeffrey, councillor Moore, all in favour? Carry it. Thank you. So we will now conduct the election of the deputy mayor.
Yep, you're right. So we need to look at the recommendation, and the recommendation is, do we firstly want to have a deputy mayor?
Thank you.
And if we do, then we will go into an election process.
Councillor Kelly. Councillor Kelly.
I'd like to move that we do have a deputy mayor.
Thank you.
For the remaining period.
Thank you. So as per recommendation?
Yep.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Councillor Jeffrey, thank you. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Kelly?
Yes, I see the role as deputy mayor as important in a civic and democratic system that we have. I think it's important for a backup to the mayor. We've seen the necessity for the deputy mayor when Mayor Benham stood down for an extended period and deputy mayor councillor Moore stood up as he was the deputy. And then, you know, floods happened and it was a really important period where the deputy mayor role was integral to the good governance of the region. I think it's important. Councillor King, you mentioned mentorship, so the deputy mayor does get that little bit more mentorship in case they do ever take on the mayoral role, and also some sort of succession plan. Not that it's essential or ever given that the deputy mayor ever becomes the mayor, but often it does happen, as in this case here, we have here. Councillor King easily transitions up to the top dog position, leader amongst equals. And so I feel that the deputy mayor position is important. I think most of the people who have ever held that position have thought the same and enjoyed that position and enjoyed the extra roles that it takes on. Most other councils in Victoria and possibly Australia do make the decision to hold that role. Our neighbours do. Many regional and city councils do have the deputy role, deputy mayor role. So I see it as important that we do, and I hope we do this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, I would start on to that. It is about maintaining the leadership within council where the mayor is absent or might have a conflict of interest during that council meeting, that the deputy mayor is the person that steps in and chairs that has earned the item, but also where the mayor is absent or not able to make regular visits to the CEO and the directors during the week, that we have a deputy mayor that are aware of what's happening and can keep a loop and work in the same queue as a mayor. If the mayor's away but don't have a deputy, then it's around further than councillor to work with the CEO and the directors, which become very difficult for, as I said, direction and consistency across the council. So full of support, deputy mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any speakers against the motion? Councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, as you've said now, I should have my closing mayoral address. I've been mayor on six occasions. We are a team. Any member of that team should be able to stand up and represent the mayor in the due process. Under the Local Government Act 2020, the remuneration fees for the deputy mayor came into effect. Many years ago, there was no extra remuneration for that. As of 2020 and going into this next year, 2024, the mayor will be paid $105,000, the deputy mayor $52,000 and a few extras, a little bit on that, round figures, and the councillor $32,000. Why is one councillor worth $20,000 extra that could go back into the community? As you well and truly know, last term as mayor, I took a $25,000 pay reduction because that's what the mayor used to be paid. We are not in this for the money. Just because other councillors are doing it doesn't mean we should do it. We are a team. The Local Government Act allows for us to nominate anyone to take on the mayoral role. It does not have to be the deputy mayor in the mayor's absence, if you read through that properly. The deputy mayor doesn't automatically step into that role. The council have to elect the person into that role. We have a policy to do that, but the act does not say that. So I propose that we should not have a deputy mayor. We should work as a team and all support the mayor and put $20,000 back into the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Do you have any other speakers? Councillor Young?
I'd like to speak against the motion. I agree with what councillor McPhee's just said. We've got six other councillors on this council who can do the job of the mayor when the mayor's absent. So that gives the mayor the option to choose who might do particular tasks at the best of their ability, but also it gives experience to all councillors who may be thinking about the mayoral role to gain a range of experience right through and doesn't just make it one person who gains that experience. Also, I agree with the $20,000. I believe that would be better left in the community and give all the councillors that role to take up the deputy mayor position.
Thank you, councillor Young. Do you have any other speakers for or against the motion? If not, councillor Kelly, would you like the right of reply?
Yeah, look, councillor McPhee does put up a good argument, so I suppose it remains as a decision for the council. But yeah, it's a little bit tricky, this one.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. All right, we'll put the motion that council elects a deputy mayor and that the mayor conducts the election of the deputy mayor. All those in favour? Sorry, what's that? In favour?
Of what?
Of having a deputy mayor and conducting a deputy mayoral election. Thank you. Against? Thank you. Motion's carried.
I'll vote for division, thank you, Mr Mayor.
You may call for a division, councillor McPhee. Show of hands, those in favour of electing a deputy mayor and the mayor conducting the election of the deputy mayor?
Oh, sorry, I got mixed up here.
Councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey, councillor King. Those against having a deputy mayor? Councillor Young, councillor McPhee, councillor Kelly and councillor, okay, sorry. Motion is lost. There will be no deputy mayor.
The most have lost, still need a motion to...
Sorry. Thank you.
I'm not the motion, we don't have a deputy mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor McKay, second to that motion. Councillor McPhee, would you like to...
I thought you mentioned the previous arguments, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McKay, would you like to speak to that motion as the seconder?
Yes, yes. Oh, look, I've been convinced by the discussions of councillor McPhee, and I do agree that we will be even and fair and either of any of us councillors can represent the mayor, should that be required. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any speakers against the motion? No speakers against, then I'll put the motion that we do not have a deputy mayor. Is that, sorry, is that what you've got, Sharon? Thank you. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. Move on to the ordinary business. Agenda item 2.4, planning application 23 railroad Beverford, re-subdivision of land in a farming zone. Miss Green?
I'm going to hand over to Warwick shortly, but you have three applications here today that are similar in terms of being council decisions. Just wanted to remind councillors that Warwick in his reports has put in some recent BCAT decisions where councils has refused. I think it's three other similar applications and it's been upheld with BCAT. Just keep that in the back of your minds when you're making decisions on those three. And Warwick will briefly... And Warwick will briefly, very briefly, go through each application.
Thanks Warwick. Do you mind just turning side on Warwick, because I'm aware that people in the gallery are struggling to.
I'll try and speak up.
Yeah, try and speak up, I'll just turn a bit side on. Thank you.
Thank you mister mayor. I just wanted to point out items 2.4, 2.5, 2.6 and 2.7, they were presented at council council assembly September 26th, so they've all been briefed on what the actual planning applications are for. So I'll go straight to item 2.4. This is for 23 Ray Road Beverford. It's a re-subdivision of land in the farming zone. Ultimately, the re-subdivision of this land creates a lot for a dwelling, which is strongly strongly discouraged under the zone and also in planning planning policy. So the recommendation is to refuse to grant a planning planning permit for the reasons outlined outlined in the report and I'll take the take the report as read.
Thank you, any questions councillor McKay?
Thank you. Currently, we have two titles here, don't we? Is that right?
Ah, no, there's three.
Three?
Yep.
Oh, but no.
There's a small tiny lot just up in the corner. If you have a look at page two.
Yep.
There's a plan there which shows the boundaries, it's got the red borders. If you look at crown allotment 67B, that's that tiny one up in the corner.
Okay, sorry, the tiny one there.
Yep.
Separate to the, sorry, that's not, I missed that.
Correct.
So is it correct to say that this realignment or of the boundaries will result in one larger parcel of land for agricultural use?
Correct.
Just checking that, thank you.
Any other questions councillor McPhee?
Fifty new recommendations, mister Fisher. Number four, the proposal will set a precedent for similar farming zone land within the municipality. Why did you put that particular recommendation in?
Well, I guess if your if council is actually approving subdivisions of this nature, then a precedent gets set and it's difficult if another application is lodged for a similar planning application that relates to, say, excising dwellings off land. It would be difficult then with council to say no.
Any other question?
Yeah, thank you. Could I ask if if that channel reserve, is that going to become private land?
No.
Because it's an active channel.
Correct.
Yeah. And when you talk about precedent, are you keeping tabs on how many, say in the last five years, how many decisions council has made against the recommendations such as this in regards to the issues that are present here? Like, are we, have we regularly made these types of decisions? Is a precedent already set?
Well, I guess the recent VCAT cases that have been up which have related to Swan Hill Rural City Council, VCAT have ruled in favour of a favour of council for similar planning applications.
Yeah, but they're the ones we've knocked back. I'm talking about the ones we've let through that we've, we've, do you know how many percentage that we have granted?
I need to take that on notice, but.
We would need to take it on notice, but I would suggest it's a very small number. I'm not saying there's nil, but there would be some that are similar, but often have different, you know, everyone is a little bit different. Council has approved in my time here, I'm going to say less than a handful of these these sorts of applications, mostly mostly refusing.
But it wouldn't be the first one, so in, yeah, a precedent possibly has already been set. I suppose I'm being pedantic about the word precedent. Thank you.
Any other questions councillor Young?
I've got two questions. What's the process that was followed in this situation to inform the applicant they had not submitted adequate comprehensive information to the process? Like, it's right through, yeah, I think this is not comprehensive enough in the information. So what was, were they actually informed of that and informed that they could actually put more information in or?
Well, I guess we need to take it, we need to look at what has been lodged.
Yeah.
And what has been lodged, we can look at that and like, I'd have to have a look back at the file to see whether what was actually asked of them. But generally, planning applications of this this nature, there's not really much else that they could potentially do. And what they have put forward is what they are going to be asking for, so yeah, I'd have to have a look, I'd have to take that on notice as well. And have a look back on the file to see what letters were sent or, yeah.
Because people don't always know exactly what they have to put in and they're getting all these knockbacks. It's going to make a big, not very positive experience.
Hang on, Ms Green, you'd like to add to that?
In all these cases, a qualified planning consultant has been used to lodge the applications. They should know what they're doing in terms of providing enough information in accordance with the planning scheme in each application. As Warwick says, we often do further information requests, particularly with how is this going to aid the farming of the site, because any subdivision should improve the opportunity to better farm by the use of a whole farm plan. That's not been submitted in this case. I can't tell you whether that was asked, but we would normally ask for that for when someone wants to do this sort of subdivision.
Second question is, the application for the subdivision of farming land is strongly, this is what was actually said in the notes, is strongly discouraged but not disallowed. Does it mean to say that it can be allowed regardless of VCAT decision?
Yes, it does, it can be allowed.
Can be allowed.
There is an opening for specific circumstances where, for instance, where the residual allotment is consolidated with an adjoining farm and clearly aids the farming of the region or the area. But what it still does is create a residential lot in the middle of a farming area, which we all know can cause issues with the right to farm.
Any other questions councillor McKay?
I'd just like to move a motion please.
Yep.
That councillor issues a planning permit subject to the conditions outlined in the attachment. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second for that motion? councillor Young? Do you wish to, so I can just make sure that we've got that. Sharon? You've got that? councillor McKay, go ahead, would you speak to the motion?
Councillors are here because we have a good understanding of our region and I have a lot of respect for our planning officers and the hard work that they do and appreciate the lot of information that they've had to put forward. However, I do see that this change of the boundaries essentially and titles here is not making any difference to the existence of agricultural land. In fact, it is two smaller allotments being combined to make one larger allotment with a section 173 agreement on it will only be able to be used for agricultural land. It's probably more likely to be used for agricultural land. We do have a shortage of housing in this region and to attach that land to the house forevermore is not going to help our housing situation and it's not going to help that agricultural land to be used for farming. We, I think we're all aware that to be a viable farming, you need a lot more than 10 acres of land or even 20 hectares, but nonetheless 20 hectares is the minimum. But this was a house on a smaller lot, a very small lot. So I see no problem, it's not essentially going to make any difference to how much agricultural land is farmed in our area. I think we are all aware of the hundreds and thousands of acres that are used to farm either irrigation or dry land and they can be started and used in any particular location. And this is probably likely to result in a little more agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, mister mayor. I said that the disallowance of this proposal is not in the best interest of the Beverford district that would benefit from a move to more residential allotments in an area where lifestyle activities are more predominant than serious farming ventures. The possibilities of that would be more students to attend the Beverford school, more support for Beverford businesses, make available more lifestyle options for the Swan Hill region and bring in more rates for the Swan Hill Rural City. The issues related to farming, e.g. noise, dust, sprays, are often quoted as issues that can be detrimental to anyone living in this or similar areas. But this is not recognised or seen as an issue where on-farm accommodation is now allowed, e.g. two lots at Wurundjeri and one now in Tresco. So that's not consistent with that. The whole agricultural profile of the area and region has and is changing, but the state laws do not recognise this fact. We are stuck with laws and regulations passed and maintained by city-based politicians and bureaucrats who do not understand and recognise the changes required. The definition of agricultural benefit needs to be re-examined, taking into consideration such as the viability and productivity of the agricultural and horticultural industry, changes to the whole horticultural landscape, bigger operators, more corporate style ownership, changes to water and irrigation options now not suited to areas surrounding smaller townships. There's a need for change. The protection of farming land laws and approaches were led by farmers and organisations such as the NFF and state bodies, based more on small family farm operators that in many cases no longer exist. We have smaller unproductive farming blocks scattered throughout rural council areas and we need to change.
Thank you councillor Young, somebody wish to speak against the motion? councillor McPhee?
Yeah, I speak against the motion. Yeah, look, the question I raised about the setting a precedent, what we are doing councillors is setting a precedent out. This is an area where we seriously need to be very careful what we do. If we were going to oppose it, I would be, we've got to look at each case on its merits, I agree with that. But the planning policy discourages small lot subdivisions unless the balance of the lot is a minimum size, which is 20 hectares. This whole block is not 20 hectares. When I first moved up to this area, I would have loved a block of that size with a house on it to have a hobby type farm on it. We've got to provide a variety of housing, not house blocks in farming zones. Those areas need to be, we just had a housing summit where we talked about a variety of homes. We just don't want homes out in the middle of nowhere. And then obviously, once these people start moving into these homes scattered everywhere, they're going to want services. They're going to come in, knock on council's door saying, where's all the services you provide for me that they get in towns? We can't possibly do that. That's what planning is about, not doing this in an ad hoc manner, just subdividing houses off. With all due respect to the Beverford district, I'm sure there would be people that would love to live on a farm in an area this size, that had a few horses or had a few sheep, just not for a, as a hobby, not an income. But if we start cutting all these up, there's not going to be the option to do it. As for the 173 agreement, they can be challenged all the time in VCAT. There's no guarantee that they're going to stay. You can put 173s on until you, you know, I'm, oh, don't say that. You put on for as long as your life. But the thing is, it's, they can be challenged in VCAT in the future and it's not good planning policy what we're doing. Think of it seriously where we're going with this councillors. We need housing, yes, I agree with that whole hardly. We need the housing in the right location and the right style and size of housing. And we need to provide blocks of this size for those hobby farmers and people that want to come up, pour a lifestyle with a bit of land. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee, does anybody else wish to speak to the motion? councillor Jeffrey? Speak against?
Yep, certainly, as a councillor, I do take every application on its own merit. And in this one, I'm speaking against the motion. And I fully understand the applicants to desire, applicants desire to retire and live in the existing dwell on that they have. But in accordance with our plan and policy framework and everything identified in the report, it's less than 20 hectares, it's already in a horticultural area and we can't decide to continually allow the exercise of house out of rural, whether it's irrigated or dry land farming to allow people to retire. It might be fine that they live in the house for 20 years and then they move on and new people move in and I don't like the practice is going to create a farming area. And the farmers need to, blah, to continue to have the right to farm. So against the exercise of the house block in this area. And also, it's just worth noting that not only are we, by allowing this, would be setting a precedent, also setting a precedent along, they don't need to supply all the other information to make a decision. Now, there's no whole whole farm plan here. There's a number of areas that haven't been provided to make this an application of looking at proof. Then if we approve this, we're just saying to end the applicant, lots of bare minimum, don't worry about getting a proper application submitted or tipped off. And I think that's poor practice and if we approve this, we're just allowing that to continue to happen. We have, in this one and the following reports, a number of cases that council has refused that have been upheld by VCAT because we are following the plan and policy framework for us and the state that they implement. So I'm against the recommendation, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, does anybody else wish to speak against the motion? If not councillor Kay, you have the right of reply.
I've said all I needed to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll put the motion that councillor issues planning permit to grant subdivision of land, the three lot re-subdivision of the farming zone, 23 Ray Road, subject to the conditions in the attachment. All those in favour? All those against? Motion is lost. I have a new motion please.
I'll move as per the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, move as per recommendation. Second up councillor McPhee, thank you. councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Said enough, all I had to say on the previous motion.
Thank you councillor McPhee?
No, it's all been said, mister mayor.
Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I will put the motion as per recommendation, that refuses a planning permit as per the recommendation. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Thank you councillors, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, item 2.5. Mister Fisher again, over to you.
Thank you, mister mayor. Item 2.5, planning application for an eight lot subdivision at 15 Donald Street, Nia West. To point out, this subdivision is in the general residential zone, so it's not a farming zone. The application is for eight lots ranging from 300 to 377 square metres. And the recommendation from the planning department is to refuse to grant planning planning permit, subject to the reasons outlined, and I'll take the take the report as read.
Thank you, any questions councillors? councillor McKay?
Yes, just on, just a question, and I do apologise, I probably should pass this before the meeting, but in the report on page 8180, and it's probably just how the report is set out, at the top of each one, it says clause 56011 subdivision and context, is that sort of a heading? Because it's repeated on each page. Subdivision design response, subdivision design response.
If you could scroll down a bit, I'm not sure.
That at the top there, it's, it sort of repeats that on every page, it's got the same thing at the top.
It should only be at the start, so that might just be.
A mistake, an error.
Error, yeah.
Yeah, or you know typo or goodness knows, writing these reports and tables is complicated. I'm really not trying to, I just wasn't sure if that was supposed to be some sort of heading because it tends to, the do not, does not comply as repeated dozens of times throughout the table when it should be only once on that.
No, that, sorry, I'm just.
Noted. Any other, any other questions? councillor McPhee?
Is there drainage in the area? Is there drainage in the area?
Yes, there is.
And does this, does this proposal have a legal point of discharge?
I'm going to ask Leah if you don't mind.
Ms Johnson, are you able to come in?
Yes, through you, mayor. I believe, still to be confirmed obviously, in terms of once all the information comes over to engineering. But at this stage, I believe there is a basin at the western end of Donald Street. So it would be more than likely that you would use an open swale along Donald Street to go to a basin. to go to a basin at the western end.
Any other questions? No? Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. With this particular street being untarmac'd, I was, I wanted to ask, would this development, if all all the lots that were created were built on and had residents in them, would that assist with the potential sealing of that road? For instance, with no residents there, it doesn't have much hope of getting sealed. But with residents, that can contribute to a, what do we call it? A self-funded sealing of a road?
Contribution.
A contribution. Without residents, there's no contributions. With residents, so it's a question. I'm not sure who to, Director of Infrastructure or Director of.
I can take that one. So should a planning permit be granted?
Yes.
In the suite of conditions that are in there, there is a condition in there asking for that road to be sealed, which will go all the way up to, sorry, just up to Station Street because that road is also sealed. So basically, we'd be asking for that road to be sealed from this lot all the way up to Station Street.
Just letting, could you let me know which, which?
What's on this page?
Page 101.
Donald Street upgrade before. Permit holder must upgrade Donald Street from the western section side of land and connect to the existing sealed section of Station Street. So you're asking as a condition for Donald Street to be?
Yes.
And that's a regular thing that is asked for with such a planning permit?
For sites like this, yes.
Councillor Kelly, you finish with questions?
Yes.
Yep, councillor Kay.
Is it true that the need to bitumen that road is assessed on a case-by-case basis? Or is it legally, is that the convention or every, because it's got four different titles proposed because of the density of it? If it was a house, for example, if it was a house being put on one of those lots, would there be the requirement to bitumenise the road?
No, so currently there's three lots. And they're hoping to turn those three lots into eight lots.
Yes.
Currently, you actually don't need planning permit to put a single dwelling on each of those three lots. So councillor wouldn't have the power to ask that.
Okay.
But due to turning those lots into eight lots, obviously there'll be a larger load put onto the road. And yeah, it's basically standard that if you're doing something of this nature, that the road must be sealed and built.
I have another question. It says there are a lot of conditions, but also a lot to be provided to engineering if we were to vote to allow this subdivision. There's a lot more detail that would have to come before the houses, is that correct? Because it is quite, it's a very simple amount of information provided. That would include drainage, they would have to come through engineering, is that correct? If there was, if we allowed, if councillors voted and allowed this subdivision, the detail of the drainage and, you know, the size and, but the buildings wouldn't need a planning permit? Can someone explain what that means for the benefit of the gallery and us? What will come to, what will pass through council and have to be known before anything gets built? Because there's not much here on the page at the moment.
Well, with, so basically, they would need to be lodging civil lands, which will detail how the land will be actually serviced, and that servicing will need to be to the standard of testing.
Another question, I apologise, but it is a complicated thing. It proposes eight lots with a driveway down the centre or a road down, you know, down the centre. Would it be typical for us to expect that that would be bitumened in the planning to come? That we wouldn't end up with eight houses and a dirt road in the middle of those houses?
No, it would be sealed.
Right, so those normal requirements of planning would come into the construction of this project? Thank you, because at the moment it's a subdivision and, you know, those steps are complicated. Thank you.
Councillor Young?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The planning assessment report indicates that Nyah, Nyah West or Nyah West is suitable and appropriate for this type of development. The document is not incorporated into the planning scheme as yet. So what will happen when it goes into the planning scheme? And would that have had a big influence on the decision for this project?
I think the document, yeah, I'm just scrolling. Did you just tell me which page that was on? I'm sorry.
It's actually stated in the main section, God.
The document, we're not saying that the document is actually going to be incorporated, but it was just a document which had some, I'm still trying to find it, I'm sorry.
Can't find it all.
Other small town feature, it's on page 77. Miss Green, are you more familiar with that document? Because that was done before me.
So councillor has not seen this document yet. It is an audit of our small towns and the, it's an audit, it's not a strategy outlining sites that might be suitable for future development. Because it includes private land, it will be a confidential document. But that will be presented to councillor later this year at an assembly. So it must identify this general part of, Nyah West has got some potential for growth, yes, is really what we're saying.
Answer the question, councillor Young? Councillor McPhee, do you have a question?
Yep. If councillor were to allow this application to go through with those conditions, those conditions can be challenged at VCAT, and at VCAT, those are individual conditions can be, so it may only take them with one condition. We have no control over it once it goes to VCAT.
Yes.
Yep, so they can.
They can, just challenge them, yes.
And one condition can be removed, not the whole lot.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Councillor Kelly?
Look, the condition number 31 says protection of native vegetation. The overhead picture on page 55 does show some native vegetation in lot 66 adjoining the road reserve. I don't know that site, what is that vegetation, is it trees or shrubs? And is it of any significance?
No, so basically the lot size, that basically allows the owner to clear it because you don't actually need planning for that.
No.
But the trees and the native vegetation in the road, in the road reserve, they actually would need planning for that to be taken out. So if they're going to be putting drains in, it's possible that those, the native vegetation in the road may actually need planning permit for that.
Yeah, but do we know, are they, what species or what size? Or are they of any significance in regards to amenity or habitat?
I need to take that on notice, but it is known as native, but I'm not sure the exact type.
And in terms of the planning scheme, it doesn't matter what sort it is, if it's native veg, then it's covered.
Yes. I would hope, though, that when we do come across a site that has some significant veg that we could negotiate with the owner to.
Councillor Kelly has a question or a statement?
No, that's more a thinking, thinking bubble.
Any more questions?
No questions for me, thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Moore?
Can I move option two, councillor issues a planning permit subject to the conditions outlined in the attachment?
Thank you, have a mover.
Could that be?
Sorry, option.
Option two, which is to council issue a planning permit subject to the conditions outlined in the attachment.
Thank you, do I have a second after that motion? Councillor Young? Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Should I move an amendment?
Do, councillor King?
Yes, you can move an amendment. You can propose an amendment and move it, yes.
Could I propose an amendment? That, the same motion, but adding that that we remove condition 10, which is the Donald Street upgrade, that we remove that. I second that.
Councillor Moore, do you accept?
I was just trying to work out, what is it again?
Page 101, condition 10, in the proposed planning conditions. Can I speak to it?
No, hang on, hang on, I'm just checking if the mover wants to accept that amendment, and then it's not.
No, that's absolutely detrimental to the whole.
Okay, don't accept the amendment.
No, I don't accept that.
Councillor Kelly, you've moved an amendment. Have a second after that amendment. Councillor McKay? Councillor Kelly, you wish to speak, you speak to your amendment?
Yes, please. I just think that that condition is a very large impost on the developer. That may, they may take it to VCAT, they may decide not to proceed. That would, the monetary value attached to that would be large. I think it's unfair, and I'm keen for this municipality to create affordable housing. And that condition is not going to help that happen. So I think it's, happy with the rest of the conditions, but that one, I think, it would be better motion if that was removed.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Kay, you wish to speak to the amendment?
I am concerned that it will be challenged in VCAT, which costs council money. We know that there is an extraordinary need for housing in Nyah Western District Boundary Band, Wurundjeri, all these places, people are being crowded conditions in every place possible. So although it would seem from the census data that we don't have an opportunity for growth, that the horse has bolted and it's already grown significantly. Any, although I can see that this does seem like quite a small subdivision, the reality is that people are living in crowded conditions in all types of locations around our municipality, and this would be probably an improvement on that. Also, I'd like it noted that the community of Nyah West have already submitted a submission, a petition to councillor to bitumenise the street of Donald Street for the people who already live there. And yeah, I think that a great outcome would be for us if there was more housing built in Nyah West. And yes, I can see that it's not quite of the same nature as the other housing in Nyah West, but there is a great need for housing, and it's not, I'd like changing the main street, which is of heritage value. And I think currently where this proposed development is, is a dust bowl. So I don't think we're interfering with too much heritage there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Does anybody wish to speak against the amendment? Councillor Young? No, sorry, I thought you had your hand up. Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll speak against the amendment. Councillor McKay brought up rightly that there are other roads within Nyah West, so I can always that bitumen. So when we have such a intensive development being proposed on a street, it would be fair and right that we would request that that developer contribute towards the development of the drainage and the road and any infrastructure that goes in because they're not building one house, they're building, was it eight little units that you called out on three other square metre blocks? So it's going to have a large impact, I think. Regarding this amendment, I think it's more appropriate to be included if the, if the application is.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Does anybody else want to speak in favour of the amendment? Against the amendment? Councillor Moore?
Yeah, look, if this project goes in without sealing of the road, first thing that's going to happen, as councillor McKay has already mentioned, people want that road sealed. And at whose expense? Ratepayers' expense, all the ratepayers. And if increased traffic, there'll be dust complaints. So we've already got that, we're just adding it, we're making it worse. If there's enough in this from the developments perspective, I guess the blocks weren't very expensive in the first place. So part of the development cost is to, and in all occasions, as we see on our own developments that go close to town, the developers put in and contribute to the road infrastructure and the sewerage infrastructure and drainage infrastructure. That's a normal process. These aren't onerous conditions, these are normal conditions for every developer. And there's nothing unusual about it. So as far as I'm concerned, this amendment pulling out that just creates a real headache for us down the track. Councillor Wiscare and the Camaraderie, as councillor McKay said, we're already getting petitions to seal the road at our expense without any contribution from the residents. So no, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Kelly, you have the right of reply for your amendment?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I do think that if we, if we grant this as it is with the proposed planning conditions, including the upgrade, I think it won't take away the problem because the residents, the new residents of those eight lots, they may come out of their driveway and they may turn left. And they may head down there, which will not be tarmac'd because this only requires from the western side of the land to connect with Station Street. So they may turn left, and that will create dust and whatever. So, you know, the best outcome is if the whole of Donald Street is tarmac'd, which we could put in a scheme where there's contributions, and then there's eight more residences to contribute to that. So the best outcome is if the whole of Donald Street is done, it goes on our capital works projects and is done. I don't think just tarmac-ing that small part of it is a good, the best result. And I think it is an onerous condition to put on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come to a vote, so those in favour of the amendment? Those against the amendment? The amendment is lost, and we revert to the motion. Councillor Moore, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, councillor King. Well, this is a fantastic opportunity for council in an area that actually has potable water and is sewer, which is unlike a lot of our other small towns. This I see as a development, if the developer has the will of thought to get a drainage line to the legal point of discharge, which then can be used for other developments. Secondly, the street sealing to up to Station Street, then that's a whole upgrade to the whole area, which means more blocks can be developed on there as well without developer contributions because the street will all be there. Councillor won't be on the hook for extra charges. And like we're just saying, we're sort of going to subsidise housing through not sealing a road. In this case, if these conditions are here, the developer might very well do. His mum is saying, "Yep, I can do it." So I think it's a great, great job, a great proposal, and it could easily be a catalyst for much bigger development in Nyah West. And it's one of those towns that has set potable water and sewerage, something that we're lacking on in our small towns, and could be just what we need. Someone to get in there and say, "Let's give it a go." And I think we should be wholly, wholly supportive of those, even though I know it's a good sort of recommendation that I think into the future. We've got to think positively and use everything that we've got in this, what we've got going for us, and that is potable water and sewerage, to get this road sealed, and it could open up that whole street for future development. And of course, and more housing, which we just promoted. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Young, you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to endorse what councillor Moore just said. This is a great thing for. This is a, a great thing for Nia West because, um, that area out there in the community is just so keen to expand and develop and this initiative provides an opportunity for this to happen. It'll also give encouragement to other developments and locals to pursue provision of more attractive accommodation options. The issues of street construction and accessibility and safety can be incorporated over the period of time of the project and provide an opportunity for further development. Um, there is a statement in there, uh, relating to, um, not doing, not allowing the, um, uh, project to go ahead and says it does not protect the residential character of Nia West in terms of the Nia West township, lot size and character. Nia West is very keen to see this development and the initiatives that would come out of it would be of great economic and social benefit. This area out there is one of the major horticultural regions and is well known as providing accommodation for workers, um, that are working in the growing and huge horticultural industry. We need more housing accommodation options in areas close to those surrounding areas of horticultural growth and this would provide an option for that to happen. Um, I'd just like to say, I support this wholeheartedly because I can just see, um, opportunities for smaller, uh, townships to grow and develop, especially in the horticultural regions.
Thank you councillor Young. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Councillor McFie?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, look, I don't disregard what councillor Moore said in relation to the potable water without sewerage. What about drainage? We're having an issue with drainage in Swan Hill. When I asked for legal point of discharge, they talked about swale drains to a catchment thing, to a catchment basin. That is not good planning. I'm not against this sort of thing, but let's get the infrastructure in place first. This is what's happening in and around Swan Hill, in and around a lot of areas. We do not have the infrastructure for this large industrial development. This applicant was actually offered to go down to a size six block. This isn't building houses, remember councillors, this is a planning permit. There's no houses being built out of this. This can end up with eight blocks that may never bloody sell because people may not wanna live in them. Nia West has a area that is, has the traditional quarter acre block housing. There's a lot of quarter acre block housing out there, ready and now to go at a cheap rate. This guy is just trying to capitalize on combining three blocks and making eight out of it for money. It's all he's out for and then like I said, this is not providing housing, this is only a planning application and the blocks may never sell. Keep that in mind, as well as we haven't got the drainage out there to compensate with this sort of facility. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFie. Does anybody wish to speak in favour of the motion?
Against.
Speakers against. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, look, um, I'm gonna speak against it because I think with that, um, number ten still in there, I think it's, um, doomed to fail anyway or be taken to VCAT. Um, that's a very large area of road that will cost a lot. Um, in regards to those, that size, you know, um, I do agree with councillor, councillor Moore and councillor, um, um,
Young?
Young. I kept thinking King. Councillor Young, because, uh, you know, as they say, the, the need is great. Uh, we had the, the summit yesterday, um, tiny houses are all the go and tho- those type size blocks will be perfect for that. Um, I think it's unfair on the developer to have to tarmac that amount of road and then councillor Moore says to the benefit of the people who wanna build on the other blocks along there, well, why should this developer take on the cost of the whole road? But then the, the people who build on the other blocks don't have to contribute anything. It doesn't seem fair to me. So I'm gonna vote against it.
Thank you councillor Kelly.
Against.
Councillor Jeffrey?
I'd, uh, um, sort of speak against the proposing, um. No, it, it, any, any plan is, is always difficult to make. But my assessment of this, I mean, my analysis in regards to is this, through the subdivision appropriate for Nia West, where you have, I think, uh, I think there's sixteen blocks on that stroke with four or five houses on it and the proposed four blocks being, I don't want to subdivide into the eight, uh, it's gotta be surrounded by vacant blocks. And it doesn't have road, it doesn't have drain, it's a lot of potable water, but it doesn't have all the services to go with that type of development that we have. And these are high density developments, something we might see in Swan Hill and Robinvale, that have three streets developed with a single house and that would continue, put some townhouses as well. But even those, that once we have a group that might pass, have a thing, there's others. So, uh, there are plenty of blocks there in Nia West, they're fairly affordable and it'd be much more appropriate for us, a house or two houses put on five hundred square meters attractive for developers, developers. So, uh, had a lot of consideration, I get the points for and against, but it's just, it's high density, it doesn't have the services and it is for anyone that did buy a developing unit there, they probably not realise what they're gonna be to run, they've got, don't have the services, it's gonna surround it by dust and don't know that's possible. So, speaking against the proposal, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for or against the motion? Councillor McKay?
Um, I'll speak for the motion, although I would prefer if we were not putting such onerous demands. However, I do not find that I can vote against it. Um, I'm very happy to hear some of our councillors say we should be investing in infr- in infrastructure in small towns and put that infrastructure there. I'll probably be following that up with some, um, you know, trying to achieve that in the coming, uh, year because, uh, we do have incredible amount of opportunity to facilitate further growth in housing. We had a housing summit yesterday, we know there's a need and, um, this subdivision is allowed, allowable in the general residential zone. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Councillor Moore, would you like to, uh, reply?
Thank you, uh, uh, King. Um, I'll just reply on the, uh, density, um, caravan parks are high density. Uh, our on farm accommodation, uh, where the workers are housed, uh, that's high density. Um, I don't see why this is any different if it's, if it's gonna end up as worker accommodation. Um, it is high density, um, we don't know whether the, you know, the current owner of these blocks could own the blocks on the other side of the road for all we know. We don't know, I don't know who owns it. Um, we're very likely contributing something to, something in the future that is gonna already make a benefit of anyway. So, and my view that is that, well, if I'm gonna seal a road, I'll go and buy the other blocks and get the value out of it. So we're trying to preempt, um, a developer, what a developer might do. Um, I think this is a fantastic opportunity here to, you know, even test the market. Now, the developer might just say, well, I'm not gonna seal that road, I'm not gonna do this, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw. It's, it's in their court, but if we don't, don't seal the road, we're gonna be on the hook to seal it at some point. Uh, I'll take councillor McFie's point on, on drainage and I certainly would be against any, any form of swale drains. We've had our experience with them, we always end up picking up the tab. But that's, that's a matter for engineering to work out, um, to get to that legal point of discharge. But now, on, on balance, I think this is a fantastic opportunity to provide, um, worker accommodation, um, which is affordable housing, we need it, it's, it's got the potable water, it's got sewerage. Um, and we're, and us trying to preempt what a developer might do, um, I think that's, that's not our game. I think, you know, work for the betterment of the municipality, for the greater good over time and for the growth of our smaller towns where our workforce is near where the jobs are. Um, that's all.
Thank you councillor Moore. Uh, at that point, everybody's spoken, um, so we will put the motion. All those in favour of the motion, those against, the motion is carried. Moving on, item two point six, planning application, one hundred and ten Medang Road, Robinvale Dwelling Excision in the farming zone. Thank you, Mr Fisher.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, this application, um, is for a dwelling, dwelling excision in the farming zone again. Um, it's creating a lot for a, well, there's actually two, um, dwellings. Um, the application put forward did not, um, prove that there was any, uh, existing use rights of the dwellings, uh, especially the second one. Um, now, lot one for the dwelling lot is proposed at eight thousand four hundred and fifty square metres and lot two at, uh, nine point five seven five hectares. Um, the recommendation obviously is to, is to refuse, to grant a planning, planning permit for the reasons, reasons outlined in the report and I'll take the report as read.
Thank you. Any questions councillors? Councillor Moore?
So exactly what does, uh, that number five there, the applicant has not provided adequate evidence of existing dwellings having existing use rights of, of, yes, it's a good answer. What exactly does that mean?
Uh, under clause sixty-three of the, um, scheme that asks for, um, proof of, um, existing use rights, that the dwelling has been used for the, um, previous fifteen, fifteen years.
Oh, this is what someone's lived in, for prior, to the, to the, to the evidence of that.
Any other questions? Councillor Kelly?
Um, over the last, um, couple of decades, um, we have seen, uh, have we seen a lot of, um, subdivisions like this where we now have a lot of houses that are separate to the majority of the farming land in that particular region of Robinvale. Is, is that the case?
There are lots of, there are, yeah, many, um, dwellings that have been, have been excised off farming blocks, yes.
So that's previous, previous decisions by councils, the council.
Okay, Ms Green?
I would just add that, um, if you go back, because I can go back forty years in planning, um, they were almost as a right house lot excisions up until, I'm looking at Warwick, he's probably too young, up until probably the late eighties. Um, so everyone was as right to have a house lot excision on a farming property. So a lot of ours would be that old.
And the change was made by the government?
Because of the proliferation of houses in rural areas and then people wanting to build more houses on the vacant lot lands.
But could, um, can I ask just a follow-up question? Could, could we, um, could it be said that that isn't, has been a negative outcome up there? Or is there a problem with what has happened?
We certainly do get complaints from people who live on the smaller lots about lights, noise, dust, s- spraying of chemicals, that sort of thing. Now, I'm not saying every property owner does, but we get enough for it to be of concern. Um, and it means that the farmers have to change their operations, um, or take into consideration the, the residential lot next door or across the road or down the road. Um, certainly, um, trucks on roads, dust, noise, those sorts of complaints we get from the residents of those properties. We think they're coming to the country for peace and quiet.
Hmm.
And in a horticultural area, it's not peace and quiet.
Um, and is it possible or, or have we already done something where, just say, someone purchases such a excised house or rents it, that we give them pre, pre, um, warning of, of such, um, adverse impacts that they may, uh, you know, renters' rights, uh, has such things, uh, by law in Victoria that renters are given the, um, information about whether there's been a drug den in the house? Or could it be that, that, or is it already existing that renters or purchasers of such properties are given that prior to signing, uh, onto the lease or?
We wouldn't get notification of renters moving into properties, so we would, we would never know when there's someone renting.
And there's not, eh, there's not any such, um, rules at the moment with?
No, no requirements.
No.
Um, we certainly, in more recent times, we've, uh, won seven three agreements under the, so that would be for the last twenty or thirty years. If we have allowed subdivisions, we would normally say on a one seven three agreement that, you know, you're in a farming area where there's light, there'd be noise, dust, whatever.
Hmm.
Um, but not even one reads their titles.
So that one seven three goes on the title. Yep. And certainly renters aren't showing the title.
That's right.
Thank you. Councillor Young, you had a question?
Um, yeah, I understand the question. I think some of my questions have already been asked and probably answered in other areas. But, um, I was just going to ask where we've had situations where the dwelling excisions have taken place and we've got small block subdivisions that have resulted. Um, it's, it's said in there that, um, they actually undermine the productive agricultural base. What does that mean? And what's some examples of what that happens? Has that actually happened? Because we still seem to have a very productive industry up there in Robinvale that, that does, to me, doesn't seem to be something that's actually happening.
So I guess with, um, every dwelling that gets, that gets excised off a farming lot, there is farming land that is lost. Um, so every time that, uh, happens, there's X, you know, amount of land that is taken, um, taken away from a, um, actual farming use. So whether that dwelling is associated with a farming use or not, it's, it's still actually taking land away. And then if we keep, keep excising dwellings off, it's just more and, more and more land that's getting, uh, lost.
It's the cumulative impact of multiple dwellings with land around them being taken away from farm. And then, then the possibility of another house being built, um, the lot, the vacant lot created, the small land taken away from farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions councillors? If not, can I have councillor move a motion? Councillor McKay?
I'll move a motion that we issue a planning permit subject to the conditions outlined in the attachment.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Councillor Young? Councillor McKay, you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I think, I do understand the issues that people living in the rural zone can have, but I think the complaints we get are fairly, uh, small compared to the large amount of people living in the horticultural zone and most people are aware of that. And, um, if there's a section one seventy, one seven three where when they put in complaints, we can, uh, refer them to the, the, the information that they should have been aware of. Uh, Robinvale is a booming horticultural area. As stated before, the lots are, um, you know, you need to be working on a really huge amount of area to be viable and to be economic. Um, and other factories, when houses are left on, uh, a section of farm and they become worker accommodation, they can deteriorate and i- in the end become unlivable. So when you're making a separate lot, um, it's more likely that, that that will be, um, someone's home and that they'll maintain it and care for it into the future. So it's more likely to be retained as ha- housing within the Robinvale district. So I see a lot of pluses here, um, and there are no issues, uh, other issues that are of concern. I think this land will stay in productive. We've got, not that it's particularly relevant to this, but the table grapes are continuing to be very viable at the moment. This will maintain this area in production. So I think for that reason, let's, uh, let this, uh, housing excision go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Young, would you?
I'll just endorse it, everything that, um, the councillors just said in favour of this. Um, I just believe it's, um, not really going to affect the agricultural base of the land and it's going to be better for the community in general.
Thank you. Any speakers against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'll speak, um, similar to the earlier decision. I'm pulling out the stand up against this. I like to, uh, say farming activity, but live within their existing, existing house. But, uh, our policies and, um, planning strategy does discourage a smaller subdivision in rural areas because it under- undermines productive agriculture. And it is a smaller subdivision which, you know, is discouraged for personal and financial circumstances, uh, particularly for rural lifestyle purposes. We've all had correspondence in the last couple of months from people who do live in farming zone or small houses excised. Um, wanted to know why their way to increase subsistence, you know, that purely is because even though they might be in a house that's excised, it's still in a farming zone. And the sale of prices and the, of farmland is pushed up the volume of their land because of the farming area. But that, uh, continual exorcising adds to the land that it's going into the capital group because it's a small block. So, um, we need to be protecting, uh, agricultural area and protecting the water that the farmers have to farm with that having to take into consideration who's living in that house, whether it's today or whether it's in third or fourth, it can highly unlikely that an excised house would ever end up on the farmland. That's it to us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Does anybody wish to speak in favour of the motion? Councillor Kelly? Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Does anybody wish to speak in favour of the motion? councillor Kelly?
Yeah, look, I endorse what councillor McKay said. I, I find it hard to vote against something like this when there's precedents already set. I feel that if anything, we should be starting a campaign to bring more awareness to the potential buyers and renters who do rent these houses. I have done that myself, rented a house in the farming zone before. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's happening everywhere. I think if it creates a potential for outcomes that the landholders want, it could create more housing. It just seems to be the pattern up there and, you know, potentially will be going to VCAT if we don't, if we don't send this one, if we don't make a decision that encompasses, you know, acceptable outcomes for all parties. So I'm going to vote with this one.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Any other speakers against the motion? councillor McPhee?
Yeah, I'll speak against the motion, Mr Mayor. Look, I can appreciate what the applicant's trying to do here, but you look in the applicant, in his application, and I quote him, he's talking in respect of small lot subdivision, they submit the following. "The creation of Lot Two will enable a horticultural grower within the immediate area to enlarge their holding to be viable into the future. Many horticultural growers seeking to expand their holdings do not require the existing dwellings upon the properties they have secured in the purchase. And the purchase price for the dwelling infates such price to that property. Our own planning scheme stipulates in relation to that. And the proposal is contrary to fourteen point oh-one agriculture in the PPF for the following reasons. Small lot subdivision is discouraged for personal and financial circumstances and for rural lifestyle purposes." We shouldn't take that into consideration. If we start looking at this, the applicant itself is saying they need to get bigger. If we start having all those little blocks or houses excised in the middle of this, other applicants aren't going to be able to get bigger. Farming is getting bigger in every area, dry land, in horticulture, in every game land. They need to get bigger to expand and to be viable. They cannot be viable with the, with all those little houses dotted in amongst them. And once again, I go back to the services that are provided to those houses. I accept what the applicant is proposing here. Just because it's happened in the past, as Ms Green said, the laws were allowed in the past. Just because it's happened in the past doesn't make it right. Let's make it right from this point forward and stop this type of excision. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Any other speakers? If not?
I'll speak.
I'll give you the right reply, yes.
Yes, thank you. Look, the reality of agriculture in this area, in, in Robbenvale and everywhere, is that large-scale developments are going in with great regularity. They exceed the area of this particular excision by so much. It really is absolutely irrelevant to the amount of agriculture that's going to go on or not. Large new developments are happening very frequently. This makes a difference to, this house will continue to be lived in and the farmer who is next door, I'm presuming, will be able to increase their operations immediately. And I think that's good for Robbenvale. Thank you. Please.
Thank you councillor McKay. Everybody's spoken, that needs to speak. So we will put the motion, all those in favour of the motion to grant the, to, to issue the planning permit subject to the conditions. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is lost. I have a new motion from the council.
Can we have a, can we have a division, please?
Yes, we may have a division. All those in favour of the motion, councillors Young, Kelly and McKay. All those against the motion, councillors McPhee, Moore, Jeffrey and King. Councillor McPhee?
The motion has been recommended by Mr Mayor for councillor to refuse the permit.
Thank you. I'll have a second for that motion. councillor Jeffrey? Do you wish to speak to the motion? councillor Moore? Councillor McPhee, sorry.
I'll just add to it, Mr Mayor, look, the fact that VCAT, that's not a reason to grant or refuse a permit. That is a right of anyone to take this to VCAT. That's not a reason we should look at in relation to granting or refusing a permit. And also, if you look at the shape of this block, it's not even in a, any significant shape. You've got a little pillar, a little long there, I think it was playground area or something else, all over it. The, the shape of the block isn't even consistent with the area, trying to make it workable in that area. So, and for all the reasons I said before, Mr Mayor, about is exactly the same. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak? Nothing further to add? Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? councillor Kelly?
Yeah, look, I just, I just find it difficult to knock back this one when there's, there's others that we've, that we've, that we've allowed. So it's very difficult for residents, applicants, the planning department to know where there's consistency. And that's what I think is the problem here, is lack of consistency. You know, there's, there's some we, some we, we pass excisions, others we don't. And so I, I don't, I don't agree with this motion and I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak in favour of the motion? Wish to speak in favour of the motion?
No, against.
Against the motion, councillor McKay?
Oh, I agree. We've, we've, we've excised houses in, within the last year from small, from lots of various sizes. And I think that we should be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers. Write a reply, councillor McPhee?
Thank you. The term? Councillor Kelly is writing away, we are inconsistently consistent. So, I don't know what that's like. But that's, and look, the thing is, it's each case on its merit. Each case on its merit. And some cases are in a situation where it is applicable to apply this. This is not one of those cases. And just because we've done it in the past, doesn't mean that we should be kept doing it. You're digging a hole and you're in the wrong spot. Throw the shovel out and start again. Don't keep digging the hole. Thank you, councillor.
Thanks councillor McPhee. We'll put the motion that the permit fee refused. All those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Failed to say earlier when we're talking about planning applications, there's still one to go, obviously. Applicants in the planning department are well aware that there are options in terms of the outcomes of these planning applications with respect to appeals in VCAT. And those options are available to applicants who are unhappy with the decision that has been made by council. Moving on to item two point seven, another planning application, Mr Fisher, two hundred and seventeen Robbenvale, Sealaw Grove, Robbenvale, re-subdivision of land, house excision in the farming zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Similar to the previous planning, planning application, this one is also ex, not exiling a dwelling. The dwelling lot is proposed to be point nine-nine hectares and proposed lot two, which is the balance lot, that twenty point zero one. The applicant also asked in the submission that on proposed lot two being a balance lot, that no section one-seven-three agreement is placed on there, stopping a future dwelling to be built on the balance lot, which totally goes against, totally goes against policy as well. Because obviously if they're, if they're excising a dwelling off, they're obviously saying to council that there is no need for a dwelling on the actual balance lot. So the recommendation from the planning, planning department is to refuse to grant a planning permit for the reasons outlined in the, in the report. And I'll take the, take the report as read.
Thank you, Mr Fisher. Any questions, councillors? councillor Kelly?
Is, does this proponent have a representative?
Yes.
Who is that?
BWA National Building Consultants.
And you disagree with their application, their interpretation?
Yes.
Any further questions? councillor Kelly there?
Thank you.
Other councillors? councillor McPhee?
You mentioned in your report that, as visited, this application represents a fifth dwelling excision, small lot subdivision, subject parcel since nineteen ninety-eight. Can you explain what's happened in the past?
Yeah, so this parcel of land, if you have a look at page one-four-five, the owner also owns lot one, shown on that plan there, which is the balance lot down the bottom to the south. There's an existing winery that's been excised off as well, which is that, it's a very, it's not a very clear plan. But it's shown as lot two on that plan there, which is that sort of L-shaped small lot on the western side. Yep. So that's the winery that's been excised off. Where it's lot three, there used to be two lots there. There's a small subdivision in between the winery and the dwelling to be excised, which again, it's not very clear. But if you just go a little bit up there with the arrow, there is a little small, there's a little dwelling in there. And that's also been cut out. If you have a look along Crete Road, there's a triangle at the top of where it says lot three, the balance lot. There's a little triangle, no, to your right.
Yep.
No, just up the top along Crete Road, there's a little triangle that's been cut out. So there's been many subdivisions that have actually occurred on this land. And that, yeah, is the reason, yeah, that's, that's what the notes are for.
Thank you. Other questions? There's no other questions. Have councillor move a motion, please? Thank you councillor Jeffrey.
As per recommendation.
As per recommendation, thank you. I'll have a second for that motion. Councillor Moore, seconds the motion. Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to. As identified in the report, a number of areas where this is inconsistent with our planning policy, as councillor McPhee raised in this question time, and in the report it's the fifth excise. Well, there's already been something, the fifth, or just a little bit of the fifth term order out there. Where they're excising parts of the land they had in order to create separate business entity or to lay up a third land as a tenant. And it's clear by the applicant's line, wanting one second through, what they intend to do is excise a block off, go to the house, whether it's workers or families, sons and daughters that may or may not be legal by the farm. It's having a detrimental effect on the farming area. We're leaving farming into more white housing, which might be fine for the first ten to twenty years. Within thirty or fifty years, when the property is sold off as a house on a small block, people are cooperative with farming practices and then start putting complaints in regardless of what may or may not be legal by the model. The plan at the moment is that you can put complaints in to become a person of the farm. So I'm against that, if you're excising. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. councillor Moore, do you want to speak?
Thank you. Yeah, well, of course, there's been a significant number of excisions already, a lot obviously to plan. This is another one. And as councillor Jeffrey said, to refuse the sign of one-seven-three, obviously indicates a further plan to do exactly that. But I take that as an indicator. Of course, the reason why we go with this decision is protection of our farmland. And future farming, we've got no idea who's going to live in these areas as time goes on. Increasing number of people who we think we're going to get. A nice, a green, a green change, a true change or whatever it is, it turns out to be farming operations in, in England. And as we did, as we often do, every year, about the farming operations. So it is, is consistent with our previous decisions and our overall planning policy. I'll support this motion.
Thank you councillor Moore. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? If there are no speakers against the motion, I will put the motion. All those in favour of the motion, which is to refuse the planning permit, this occasion? Those against? Motion is carried.
Can we have a division, please?
Yes, we may have a division, a division, sorry. All those in favour of the motion, councillor McPhee, councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey, councillor King. Those against? councillor Kelly, councillor McKay and councillor Young. Thank you, Mr Fisher. Thank you. Next item of business, councillors. Item two point eight, Tennis Victoria and the Tennis Australia Event Support Fund. Mr Hobbiton and Ms Heppel, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon councillors. Congratulations on your appointment, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
In August this year, representatives from Tennis Victoria, Australia met with council to outline their vision for the future of tennis in Swan Hill. They complimented the significant and high quality of work that the volunteers and staff at the Swan Hill Tennis and Pro K Club carry out. And Lawrence of Robertson, Director of Pathways and Game Development, Tennis Australia, has classed the quality of the Swan Hill tennis courts as close to, if not best, in Australia. In an endeavour to secure a medium-term arrangement for tennis events and tournaments of estate and potentially national level, for the next five years at Ken Harrison Recreation Reserve, a request to council for an annual contribution of seventy-five thousand dollars was proposed. Currently, council budgets an event support fund of one hundred thousand dollars each financial year for municipal events and activities. This fund currently supports the Swan Hill Food and Wine Festival and Robben, Robbenvale Almond Blossom Festivals, along with many others. Council also provides a maintenance and operational support to municipal recreation reserves, including the Swan Hill Showgrounds and Robbenvale Riverside Recreation Reserve. Currently, council does not directly fund the club, being the Swan Hill Tennis and Pro K Club, with either a financial or operational contribution. The table in the council report provides REN Plan modelling that demonstrates the significant economic benefit generated by tennis events in our municipality. Socially, these events raise the profile of tennis in the community and lead to greater levels of participation across a range of ages. The high standard of tennis courts are also a source of community pride. Officers have considered a number of options and tabled them in the report. On the basis of this range of options, officers recommend that council, one, provides annual financial support from the event support fund directly to the Swan Hill Tennis and Pro K, Pro K Club, which can be used for maintenance, operational or conditional financial benefit, i.e. hosting fees. And two, rights to the Swan Hill Tennis and Pro K Club advising that it will provide an annual contribution, thirty thousand dollars for the next five years commencing in July two thousand and twenty-four, subject to compliance with the requirements of the, of council's event support guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Heppel. Any questions, councillors? councillor McKay?
By the recommendation, Ms Heppel, are we suggesting that we'll try to make up for not making a contribution to their maintenance by contributing to the club, but also providing a lesser amount to tennis, sorry, the contribution to Tennis Australia? Tennis Australia, yes. So in the way we're splitting our investment?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that's right. We believe that the tennis club is best placed to negotiate their own hosting fees and appoint the, the financial contribution in accordance with their own needs.
Have we discussed that with the tennis club and know what they, their perspective or?
Through you, Mr Mayor. We have had discussions with the tennis club. We do require that the tennis club spends the, the money in accordance with the event support guidelines though. So they will need to acquit how they, they expend the contribution. so they will need to acquit how they, they expend the contribution. They are prepared to take on and manage the contribution themselves, rather than us deal directly with Tennis Victoria or Tennis Australia.
Yeah, um, so another question. But in the recommendation, we haven't specified, it hasn't been specified how much to contribute to the club. Does that mean they'd put in an application every year?
They don't need, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, they don't need to put in an application, but they do need to acquit the amount. And so, um, we have recommended an annual contribution of $30,000.
So?
Point two of the recommendation, councillor McKay.
Okay, so, so, so I understand now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Moore?
Yeah, because that, that $30,000 contribution coming out of the event support fund, um, that's no increase in the event support fund. It's just $30,000 comes out of that first for any other money that's allocated to any other events. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, that's correct. Uh, at this point in time, there is $100,000 per financial year for events. Um, a subsequent report will be coming to council to discuss the merit of increasing the event support fund.
So the question is that, um, as part of the recommendation, part two, doesn't actually stipulate that $30,000 comes from the event support fund? Even though we're saying we're going to do it in option one?
Yes.
We should communicate that to Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club.
Through you, Mr Mayor. In our correspondence with the Tennis and Croquet Club, we will identify that it comes from the event support fund and that they will be subject to the council's event support guidelines. For a quick.
Councillor Kay, no question?
I thought the event support fund was for new events and events starting up, not for recurrent funding. Is that correct? But this is a type of recurrent funding that's being suggested?
Miss Green, would you like to answer that, or?
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, you're right. We have had some discussions and will come to council with a variation to the event fund because we talked about, um, having some marquee events that would get funds every year. Um, and then there would be remaining funds for new, expanded, smaller, community-based events. Um, for this coming year, we will have more than $100,000 in the budget because there is some carryover from the COVID years. Um, so for the first year, um, there will be more than $100,000 available for, for events. And this would become a marquee event or events, regular tennis championships held here is what we're suggesting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Kelly?
What does marquee mean in that context?
Key, key events that we want to, that we would look at contributing to every year. Food and wine, um, almond blossom event in Robbenvale, those sorts of events.
Yeah, I had a couple more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on page 192, it says maintenance and staffing contribution. It lists the facilities where we're not the manager, that we're not the land manager, but we contribute to upkeep. Um, and it says the Nia Pool and the Menang Pool, $36,000. Um, how do we, do we just give them $36,000? Or is that in kind, or what, what is that $36,000 that we give to the Nia and Menang?
Through, through you, Mr Mayor, that's a contribution to the life saving, or the lifeguards, sorry, the lifeguards for each of those pools to operate each year.
Yeah, so it's given as cash so that they can pay their lifeguards?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah. So it's, um.
It's for the intention and purpose of.
It's not really upkeep of their reserves as such. It's more that particular one is for wages.
Through you, Mr Mayor, uh, there is a, um, a program for each of those sites. And so there is, um, our works, our operation works department also maintains their filters and plant and equipment. So there is.
And mows their lawns and things?
Um, there, I think that's a volunteer, um.
Yeah.
Activity, but in terms of plant equipment and pool shell maintenance, we work with both Nia and Menangatang Committee of Managements to facilitate.
I'm probably getting distracted because I was in Menang the other day.
Do you have a question, councillor Kelly?
Sorry. Um, I'll note that information. Yes, I had one down at, um, in the report that is tabled from Tennis Australia on page 207. It lists the recommendations. And it, it includes, um, that they'll help, uh, work with stakeholders to explore the business case for upgrade of the clubhouse. Um, now, I remember discussing that at the briefing, but I don't remember discussing, uh, upgrade of the four acrylic hardcourts. Um, so I feel like that's new. Would you say that's new, or I don't remember that being part of the discussion that day? You do?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um, and there's no, um, figure on that. Um, how much would it cost to upgrade four acrylic hardcourts? Um, I'll, I'll move on because we're not actually proposing to do that. Um, so it says in point three, ongoing capital works, and I'm not sure if I'm repeating another councillor's question, but, um, ongoing capital work such as court resurfacing and replacement of other core assets, such as fencing, lighting and buildings, is managed by Swan Hill Rural Council in recognition of the significant economic benefits. So I've, uh, the question is, what is the dollar figure for those, that type of ongoing capital works?
Through you, Mr Mayor. So that was actually, that, that is a direct copy of the presentation that was put together by Tennis Victoria Tennis Australia.
Hmm.
They probably didn't necessarily do their, the full, um, I guess their full homework. Although, uh, council supports and, um, maintains fencing on Ken Harrison, Ken Harrison Reserve, we, we have very little to do with the facilities at the tennis club itself.
So we're recognising that we probably could do more to help them?
I think that, sorry, I just, that this is a recommendation, the report is from Tennis Victoria Tennis Australia, and these are a list of their, um, recommendations. Um, they're not, they're recommendations from, from that organisation to council. They're not actually part of this proposal that we're, that we're discussing today.
And the other question? Miss Green, you'd like to comment?
Oh, um, just to clarify this, so there's two issues. There's sponsorship of an event or events, which is what you are considering today. Um, we're suggesting that that be $30,000 a year going to the club to enable them to perhaps negotiate a lesser amount and then use some of the money for fencing new nets, that sort of thing. And then Tennis Australia has also suggested that we need to start investing more money into the complex to allow for these events, which includes the facility and lighting and those things. That would normally go through our 10-year major projects plan, and it would be a capital expenditure. So not part of this, um, this decision.
Separate, separate report will come down the track. Thank you, thank you. So to answer your questions, councillor Kelly?
I had one more. That does answer those questions I had, but this is another one. Um, in point four, it says covering operational costs year-round maintenance and the lease contribution should be achievable with support from Swan Hill Rural City Council on managing exceptional maintenance. So I've written there, um, uh, and providing finance-assured support to the major events that can be hosted by the club. Um, I've, I've written there, what is the lease? Do we, do they currently have a lease with us?
Um, they do have a licence with us at the moment, and.
Not a lease?
A lease user agreement licence. Um, they will make a contribution that covers off on their insurance each year to, um, uh, it's a cost recovery exercise through council. Um, so whatever their insurance premium is, they will pay to us as a form of rent.
They do?
Yeah.
They currently do?
They currently do.
Okay. Yeah, um, that's all I had. Thank you.
Does anyone have a question, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, just in relation to all those other, like the recreation grounds that we maintain for all the other sports, do you have a figure of what amount we spend on those, to maintain those facilities?
I will take that on notice, um, councillor McPhee. It's a significant amount. Um, I could defer to, um, our director of infrastructure, but it, it's because a lot of those programs are blended, it, it is very difficult to determine a figure, um, yet an estimate can be, can be formed, but it's some hundreds of thousands of dollars each year.
That's right. Look, you don't have to come back with any. Look, the mowing, the watering, the maintenance, the whole lot. So it's quite a controlling amount we spend, where the tennis club have been doing that all themselves up to this point. Thank you.
Councillor McKay?
I'd like to move the motion.
Thank you.
I would like to move that we, uh.
Just, can I ask one more question?
Sure, of course, of course.
Just the $30,000 you're, the $30,000 you're proposing as against the $75,000 that Tennis Victoria, Tennis Australia asked for, is the $30,000 going to achieve what we are hoping for?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It is a good question, and we did do some research around the value of $30,000. What we do know through Sports Marketing Australia, which is the marketing body used by Tennis Victoria to conduct, um, to actually collect and gather the events fees for their tournaments, is that $30,000 is the going rate for Country Week. It's Country Week that is the most beneficial or has the most, uh, has the greatest economic benefit to our municipality. Um, although tournaments like the Pro Tour and junior tournaments have, have benefits, uh, they're not the same as Country Week. So we have gone in to match the amount that is requested for Country Week, and we would, uh, I guess, accept that the tennis club will negotiate the user fees or the hosting fee, um, for other tournaments as they see fit, and they may need to subsidize, um, the amount that we provide them with, with further sponsorship from other, um, sponsors.
Okay. Councillor Kay, your motion?
Yeah, um, I would like to move that we agree to the financial support requested from Tennis Victoria Australia of $75,000 per annum for the purpose of hosting one to two or ten events per year for a period of five years.
So basically, sorry, just to make this easy for Sharon.
Yes.
Basically, what you're asking is that item two be changed from $30,000 to $75,000 on the recommendation. Is that correct?
Hmm.
No, she's talking about option three.
Oh, sorry.
Another option. Well, I have a question first.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Option three.
So you're paying money directly to Tennis Australia, not the club?
Is that what you mean?
Is that what you mean?
Well, I want, I want us to provide the option of the full amount.
To the club or to Tennis Australia?
To the, yes, to the club or to Tennis Australia. So option three.
None of the options have.
Option three is per the report is now on your screen.
Hmm. Well, it's tricky because I want the tennis club to have the option of securing all those events.
It might be tricky, but all I'm asking for is, is what your motion is.
Well, I'd, or you'd be, I'd say, what I'm suggesting is you're saying, instead of $30,000, put $75,000 in the recommendation.
Well, I just want to clarify.
Yes, I'll do that. I'll change that to $75,000 and they can use it as they see.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
I understand. That's okay. It is, I just want.
So the, so the motion is basically, as per the recommendation, except that the $30,000, and Sharon's changing that now, to will, instead of $30,000, it will be $75,000, just to clarify, councillor McKay, for the next five years. That's, that's the intent of your motion. Thank you. Um, do I have a second for that motion?
Um, can I just clarify the motion before I second it? Um, in option three, it says the contribution to the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club will be part of the 2425 council budget process for inclusion. But that option actually says that the money goes, um, and pay the fees directly to Tennis Victoria, so.
Well, councillor McKay has, has changed the recommendation from, basically, the only thing she's changed is the $30,000 to $75,000. Um, and if we were to move that motion, my understanding would be that then that $75,000 becomes part of the budget for the next five years. Mr CEO, would that be correct?
And the event support fund.
Correct, thank you. Do I have a second? Is that clear, councillor McKay?
Um, can we?
Just want to make sure that that motion is what you want to move.
It was tricky, it's tricky with so many options because.
This one can have the event support fund, which is only $100,000.
That's right, so it takes away the money from all the other events, so that doesn't work. But you did say that we would. I think go with option three. Well, can we, sorry, I'd like to change that and say it's part of our budget process. But it goes to tennis, our tennis club. So use that.
So what you're saying, sorry, so what you're saying is that it's not coming out of the event support fund?
Yes, make it out of our budget.
Can we do that, Mr CEO?
Well, that's a big budget change, but our, our council event support fund isn't of a sufficient amount at the moment. Use that second sentence from option three where it says the contribution to the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club will be part of the 2425 council budget process.
Including it in the budget?
Yes.
Yes. Can you come on a budget on it?
Rather than an event.
Yep, so we don't have to come back to a different another point.
Yeah.
Mr Mayor, the recommendation is that the $75,000 be referred to the 2425 budget process for inclusion.
Yes, we're just clarifying. Yeah, we're just, we're just clarifying whether or not it means we have to come back with another report or whether we can actually move that motion today, that's all.
Well, we would have to go and look at our budget and move things around, basically. So we'd look at what we have committed to budget, and we're going through that process at the moment.
Yep.
This would go into the process and something else would have to come out.
Yep.
Um.
Okay.
So that would come back with our budget report.
So how was it proposed to put it in the event support fund? Isn't the event support fund also subscribed and not known?
It's budgeted each year.
Yes.
And this was to come out of the existing budget. Um, Miss Green has said, there looks like there's some need to carry forward out of COVID that will come into that as well, but we're coming back to council to explain that. Um, yeah, so that's an existing budget.
So should we defer that to discuss it?
Which will be a separate report. Um, I just, I just need a motion, basically, as to, as to what you, as to how you want to direct, how, how you want to direct this resolution.
I think we should let it go to the budget process.
So you're withdrawing your motion, or are you saying that you want that to be included in the budget process?
Included in the budget process.
Okay, so as Sharon's got it on the screen now, you're suggesting $75,000 comply with the requirements of the event support guidelines?
Yeah.
The contribution of that, so that $75,000 will be part of the 2425 council budget process for inclusion. So as I stand.
I need to comply with the guideline because it's not part of the event support fund. It would be directly into the budget.
Yeah.
Would it have its own then?
Yeah.
Would have its own set of guidelines?
Remove that.
Through you, Mr Mayor, councillor McPhee, correct. If the council adopted that, um, the event support guidelines wouldn't come into play because the funding source is not the event support.
Yeah.
Are you happy with that, councillor McKay, to remove that?
Is it possible for us, when we fund something, to make some guidelines around this at a later point? Yeah, of course. That would be possible, I imagine.
I would have thought the fact that you're moving a motion that says to comply with the guidelines.
Yes.
Means even if it's out, the money's coming from outside of the guidelines, the guidelines could still apply.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the director's correct. Um, council, for that amount of money, would have to look at a form of a sequestration process.
Yep.
Um, for a good financial governance and good governance in general.
Okay.
So whether we use, Mr Mayor, the event support guidelines, and that's probably, uh, a good starting point, uh, there would have to be some level of reporting back to the council on the contribution. That's a significant contribution.
Yes.
And.
Thank you.
And as the motion is written now, it's not complying it to be used for these events, which is not the intent. So I'd like to add another, uh, you know, that, uh, 50% of this amount be used to contribute to the proposal for the events for the next four years.
Four years, not five years.
Sorry, is it, we've got a five, one, two, three, four is the proposal, annual hosting rights. For the, for the Tennis Victoria Australia funding proposal.
Might I, might I suggest, councillor Kay? Might I, might I suggest, Councilor MacKay?
It's for five years, sorry, it's an error, five years.
So there's an error in the report?
I'm not sure where you're getting approval from, Councilor.
Twenty-three, twenty... Oh, annual hosting rights benefits, sorry.
Might I suggest the clarity, Councilor MacKay? That, um, rather than doing it this way...
Yeah.
That, just a suggestion, just for clarity, because essentially what you're saying is provide an annual contribution of $37,500 for the next five years, subject to compliance with the council's event support guidelines, and a further $37,500 to, to support the Tennis Croquet Club with operational...
Or they can choose to put it to the event.
Okay. So I'm just trying to make it a little bit clearer the way it, the way it reads. But if you don't have to agree to it, I was just trying to...
No, that, that is exactly what I'm trying to achieve.
Trying to get some clarity around it.
There's compliance around this extra funding going to these events. The tennis club can choose to contribute the total amount to the events, but we're also acknowledging in here that we haven't been contributing to that tennis club.
Number one there, that's not part of your motion, is it? Number one. You don't want that number one part, do you?
Okay. Number one, we've already got. So it says maintenance, operational or hosting fees. Let's just say that number one, we keep and go, or conditional financial benefit, we can take away hosting fees there of, of number one. And rights to the tennis club advising will provide an annual contribution, the other 37,500 for the event support guidelines, and that would be for the hosting fees. And they can use both.
Councilor MacKay, just a suggestion.
Yes.
Um, we've gone past two hours, which means we can have a 10-minute adjournment. So I'm going to suggest that we suspend standing orders for a 10-minute adjournment. And during that adjournment, you can clarify your motion with our executive assistant to...
Yeah.
Try and help her make this process a little bit easier.
I understand, I apologize.
Motion? Just take a temporary adjournment.
Oh, Mr Chair, as, as the mayor, you can make a adjournment for 10 minutes.
I'm new to this, I'm new to this. I'm calling in adjournment for 10 minutes. Thank you, councillors, we will resume at 4.19. Thank you.
I'm going to second the guidance, the mayor.
Thank you, everybody. We're back. Thanks for their enjoyment. Okay, we've managed to get a motion here. Councillor McKay, I'll ask you to read your motion just for clarity, please.
Right. That council provides annual financial support of $45,000 from the 24-25 budget, which can be used for maintenance, operational, conditional financial benefit, i.e. hosting fees. And number two provides an annual contribution of $30,000 for the next five years from the Council Event Support Fund commencing in July 2024, subject to compliance with the requirements of Council Event Support Guidelines.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Kelly? Just for the benefit, because this has taken a while to articulate, for the benefit of councillors, I'll take, if any councillors have questions of councillor McKay, just around clarifying the motion. Happy to take those questions, otherwise we'll proceed with. Thank you, councillor McPhee.
One question, Mr Mayor. The financial support fund, that's only a one-year-up payment, and then it's $30,000 for five years. But, you know, thirty-three, yeah. Thirty thousand for the next five years and one-up payment next year of $45,000.
Councillor McKay, can you clarify that, please?
Well, I think we'll go through the budgetary process of, you know, deciding about the following years, but this gives the option of that $75,000 of payment. Two, to Australia, Victoria, if the camp, that's the way the tennis club want to go, I wouldn't want to commit us to something for definitely five years.
Okay, so for the purpose of clarification, might I suggest we take annual out? Because you're not specifying how many years that's going to last for. Just a suggestion. You don't have to accept it. And the other thing is that the original motion had where the money was to be paid. This motion doesn't specify where the money is to be paid.
Well.
Councillor Jeffrey?
It's a motion. I'll then give it seconded, ruled to bite it, and then.
Yeah.
Yep.
We've got a question to clarify.
I was happy to take questions to clarify.
I'll change that to annual, and we'll have it annually be paid to the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club.
Righto. So both, so both, so both one and two paid to the Swan Hill Warren Tennis and Croquet. Thank you. I'll ask Sharon to update that, but I'll ask, in the interest of time, if you could, if there's no further questions, if you could speak to the motion, councillor McKay.
Sure. This is a wonderful opportunity. These events that are all being proposed and would be committed to if we were committing this funding, presumably once the tennis club went through their own processes, would undoubtedly be of economic benefit to our region. Securing Country Week, we know that it has a benefit. There are people who visit for a whole week. The same with the Pro Tour, the state championships. They have quite significant numbers of participants and their entourages visit for a whole week. We don't have other events where we have so many visitors come for a whole week. I think the endorsement that we had from Tennis Australia and Tennis Victoria was an incredible recognition of that asset that we have in Swan Hill. They were unreserved about saying that we have the best tennis courts in country Australia. So this is pretty phenomenal. This is a great recognition for our tennis club, but also for our community. It's an asset that we do not want to lose. So, yes, this is a commitment. However, we can reassess it in five years and say, was it worth it? Weigh up the pros and cons. Did we get what we hoped to get out of it? However, it's an opportunity to be grasped with both hands, I believe. Any, there will be a range of other towns lobbying for these events every year. We may have a cumulative effect in that we get an ongoing investment into our tennis club. We will maybe see a resurgence of tennis in our town, and I think that we do need to see more young people and more diversity of people participating in tennis. But Swan Hill is growing. As other tennis clubs are closing, we don't want to see the, you know, the loss of tennis to our region. It's a really wonderful sport. It's a national sport. We have the Australian Open. To be included in that, you know, round of events is really great for Swan Hill. I haven't seen anything come across our desks that was so exciting and so worthy. I really believe that it could be a great thing, but it also helps to justify the event, the investment that our towns made in tennis over the last 40 years. So if we were to see that tennis club demise and the demise of having the largest number of grass courts in Australia at least in one place, that'd be a really big loss, and we are looking at that possibly happening. Having Tennis Australia and Tennis Victoria come along, which just really sort of happened by chance, we've seen this tennis coming here, and, you know, we got, we got an event, I think, because another town couldn't host it. That has been a recognition of, not a hidden gem, it's an actual asset, a sporting asset, that requires enormous amounts of effort to maintain, and it's been maintained to professional level. You can see by the estimated impact, I believe that, you see the towns full of visitors when we have events like this, and a council's got to be on the lookout for good economic activity through attracting visitors to events such as this. They bring money to the town and they leave it here. And they would also see an investment in our tennis club, which is an important asset that we've, the people of the region have contributed to over many years, and we've found we've got it. It's of national quality. Thank you. This, sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing. The way that this funding, I've chosen to split this up, it puts the control in the tennis club's hands in the way they make some decisions about it. It gives us some control over compliance, but certainly when we visited the tennis club when Country Week was on, I was astounded at their poor facilities. And, you know, we've done a bit of investing in their facilities since then, but it's really been a minimal amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly, would you like to speak?
Oh, just before I speak, I think the motion.
Would you like to speak to the motion? The motion's been put. You've seconded the motion. Would you like to speak to the motion?
The motion, it was acknowledged, the motion hasn't finished being clarified. It should say that council provides to the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club, one, support for $45,000, and two, an annual contribution. That would, that would be more.
Happy to accept that.
The spirit of what councillor McKay means.
So the pay, the pay two goes in both one and two. Okay? You can do it separately. You can do it as one and then sub points. How do we do it? Councillor Kelly, would you like to speak to the motion? While Sharon fixes that up.
Yeah. Yeah, look, I think this is a good compromise. I was, I found it difficult to figure out what was required and what would be a fair way to do it to support, as councillor McKay said, such an outstanding event and potential. I think councillor McKay said most of what I, what I would want to say, but I think what councillor McKay's done there is a good way to do it. It still gets some from the event support fund and takes some from the 40, 24-25 budget, which I think can, can be done by us when we deliberate on that, on that 24-25 budget. And anything further than that can be deliberated on further. I'm sure the negotiations with the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club and Tennis Victoria and Tennis Australia will continue by the officers. But this is a way to show goodwill and that we acknowledge the potential that's there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor King. Council officers have actually negotiated the outcomes that's presented in the, in the recommendations. That's the first thing. Secondly, we're actually conducting budget negotiations here in a public council meeting, and we're preempting the outcome of the budget, of the budget next year. That's all subject to negotiation. And proper rigor and proper process, we are circumventing proper process here by, with this motion. $45,000, the extra money has to come from somewhere. We haven't made a decision where it's going to come from. We're actually sort of being ambushed and forced into making a decision where someone's merit's not going to get graded, someone's footpath's not going to get fixed. That's this decision. Proper process, proper rigor, and proper discussion at a council assembly with all the offices present from finance and, and the people here at NEDU, all together deciding what we need to do. But this on-the-run decision-making process at a public meeting, I think is just, is just wrong. It's the wrong way to go about things. The, the recommendations are good, and they've been negotiated with the Tennis and Croquet Club with, with the options of going through the proper processes, as Ms Hepple has outlined, for the other, for ongoing support, proper process, proper review. I think this is, like, I know we all mean well, and I agree with, with the whole sentiment of this attraction, but the way we're going about it, now, we're trying to preempt the budget process, and I think we should stick to the proper budget process, proper review, and proper evaluation over the next little while. I'm just, I'm just flabbergasted that we're making budget decisions here in the middle of a council meeting. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Do I have any speakers for the motion? Any further speakers against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm fully on board with providing the original recommendation in the report of $30,000 for five financial years, coming in 2020 or 2025. I know I've had discussions with the tennis club around what they were expecting, and I know that though, my understanding, my take is they were a bit surprised when Tennis Victoria came here. They threw $75,000 out because it's a lot more than what their discussions had had. So there's two aspects here. But we do have the Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club on a fantastic event at Swan Hill. It brings in tourists, it brings in competitiveness in the sport. We have some of the best tennis courts in Australia in the southern hemisphere, hence the events that they are attracting are open or want to work in it. I am quite happy as a councillor to put in $30,000 for five years to see how that supports them. If it needs reviewing one year in or two or three years in, I'm more than happy to do that. But we do have an event support fund of $100,000, and we have a lot of community groups, whether it's Robbenvale, Southern Aiden, whatever the equipment is. We have other events, such as the Food and Wine Festival. We've got the, what was it? Swan Hill Truck Festival, it's going to remain this year, can't call it, but there are plenty of community organisations who run events that are the beneficiaries to our community, bringing tourism. And by, if you rent this $45,000 or add another third, that's 75% of money that we have for events. We can't chop all that down and give it to one club to the detriment of Robbenvale, Mile West, and other areas that want events, where the tour's raising, and it's really community events. They're starting up new and looking for that investment. That's what the money was there to support some of the ongoing ones. We also create initiative and support new events to get up and running. So I think the amount request is, is more than what I'd be happy to support, if I'm more than required to continue the support for the Tennis and Croquet Club. And just in regards to the presentation around facilities and layout, we are, the board has asked, and are looking into options into what we do with the club in the future. And that's where I prefer to put taxpayers' money in, is to make sure they have the facilities to better support ongoing competitions locally as well as what they would bring to Swan Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for the motion?
I'll speak again.
Councillor McKay, you may close the, close the debate.
I couldn't agree more that I find it unusual to have it proposed by, by the officers that we support it from the Council Event Fund, because I also see that that has a risk of reducing funding to other events, but that was what was in the recommendation, so I included it. I just see some opportunities and some are so important that you've got to grasp them with both hands. And this gives the, you know, both, we don't have to give all the money to Tennis Australia or Victoria, because it's, some of it is up to the tennis club to make that decision, but well, they will have that available for the first year to, if that is what they think is needed to secure those events. I think what I do see about having the proposal being for five years is that you get certainty. And people, you know, having that repetition and not vying for it every time, you get people always upping the amount, and, you know, it's just, it's just that uncertainty, whereas if you know you've got an event on every year, put Swan Hill in the, on the circuit, it's mentioned every year, people are coming here every year. Tennis Australia, Tennis Victoria are engaged with us every year, and so this gives that option of enabling that, whereas you might run the risk with a lesser amount of not having that possible. Just see a lot of positives. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Quite all. The motion's on the screen. Debate's been had, and so we'll go to the vote. All those in favour of the motion, those against, motion is lost. Would you like to move an alternative motion?
Call for a division, please.
You may call for a division. Those in favour of the original motion, councillors Kelly, councillor McKay. Those against, councillor McPhee, councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey, councillor Young, councillor King.
Move motion. No further recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee.
Oh, second.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak to that motion?
Yeah, look, there's no doubt that this is a great opportunity for Swan Hill, but this is not the place to start impacting on the budget at this time. There's no, nothing in this motion that says we can't add some money later if we choose to, but we've got to be mindful of what the event support fund does have. It's been raised before about looking at maybe increasing that through the budget process. This is $30,000 coming out every year. We did have some carryover from this year, I believe. A report coming out very shortly asking for some of that. So there is, has been some carryover in the past. We haven't always spent $100,000, but we need to look at that. These sort of events are great. The amount of money we do spend on the other rovers, which I asked a question of earlier, is in the range of hundreds of thousands of dollars in maintenance and that sort of thing, but that's over a lot of clubs. If you divide that down, it'd probably round out to about $30,000 a club. So I think this is a fair and equitable amount to start with. If we need to up it into the future, as the events progress into the future, I think this is a good way to start. We can always increase later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, is that further? They're fully supportive. The Swan Hill Tennis and Croquet Club do a fantastic job, and they put a lot of hard work as a volunteer club into the events that they bring. We do have a limited event support fund. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's probably budget for every year, expand that. This probably says there's a sixteen, as far as I can remember. And at the end of the day, it is taxpayers' money. So if we're going to make a decision to increase that budget, it needs to be at a budget level. And the other clubs, I know you do, football clubs are a term, and cricket clubs do pay and use a fee for this. And out of that, they do get, you know, warrants and loan and treatment awarded and everything for their competition season. So I'm really happy to support the third players on the five years to the Tennis and Croquet Club, and support them in the future with some designs to get shovel ready to do some type of moving facility for them, which is in the works. So that will take years and the opportunity to get funding from state and federal bodies as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Are there any speakers against the motion? If not, I will put the motion as per recommendation. All those in favour, those against, motion is carried. Item 2.9, Smoke on the Water, May 2024. Mr Hobbin, is that your, this is yours?
Mayor and councillors.
Thank you.
Very mindful of the time and the meeting procedure local law. It's not surprising. Mayor and councillors, given our reputation of being able to stage all varieties of events, that organisers of a new event have approached council with the prospect of the introduction of the Smoke on the Water event on the 5th of May next year. It's a part of a number of events that will be staged along the Murray River, and obviously Swan Hill is critical to that, that in its central location. The councillors did receive a briefing from the organisers who have been working with council staff about what the new event will mean, and it's obviously involving barbecue and live cooking demonstrations, stalls and entertainment, children's activities, and of course there is associated craft breweries with that as well. It's an exciting concept, and it builds upon the work that we've been doing, and we're very successful at the Pioneer Settlement, the Food and Wine Festival, for example, and other events in Robbenvale and other parts. The organisers came to council and were looking at two possible venues, one being the Pioneer Settlement, and alternatively in the environment, in and around the Riverside Park here in Swan Hill. Discussions centered around the timing, and May is traditionally a very quiet time for us, so to attract a new event is a very positive thing. Officers indicated to the organisers that the Pioneer Settlement, with the possibility of construction and things going on at the Pioneer Settlement, that perhaps the focus should be at the Riverside Park, and that was generally accepted. Organisers of this event, which is obviously a private company, and they're looking to turn a profit out of it, are looking for some level of council support to meet some of the logistical costs. As always, they point out to us that other, other local government areas are considering funding, but they haven't indicated that that's been locked in. So in our discussions, both at officer level, and I think the councillors, you appreciated the event when we had a presentation at the council assembly, but we've been looking at what level of support we should recommend to the council. We are recommending a contribution out of the event support fund, and just a slight alteration to the report on page 211. There is approximately $23,000 left over in the event support fund. We will not be funding the Lake Bogar fireworks contribution. The council in a discussion last week had indicated that we'll be taking that out of the flood community recovery programme. So it's $23,000 at the moment. We've also discovered that there's some leftover funding from previous years, which will allow the council to give consideration to a second round of funding in the new year. So the officers are believing that it's a great proposal to add to our calendar events, and it cements our ability to attract these types of events. We believe it's got the capacity to promote the Swan Hill municipality, and particularly the Swan Hill riverfront, and we believe that it is a, an event that is worthy of a level of council support. The organisers initially wanted us to lock in a ongoing commitment, but I think in fairness, the, the recommendation is that we look at the first year, see how the event goes, have the event organisers report back to the council on the success of the event, and then in subsequent years, we make a decision as a council to whether we continue to provide that support. Mayor and councillors, the recommendation I commend to you is that we advise the organisers of the Smoke on the Water event of our support, and we welcome them, and we contribute $5,000 out of the event support fund towards the staging of the logistical costs with the event. But we highlight to the organisers that that $5,000 will probably not cover all of their logistical expenses, so, but just making that note. So mayor and councillors, I commend the recommendation to you.
Thank you, Mr Hobbin. Questions? Councillor Jeffrey?
A couple of questions. The $25,000, have we got any other events coming up that I could mention, or are playing into that?
So through you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Jeffrey, the $20,000 is as a result of going through the council answer process. It's left over funds. Events like, requests like this one come from time to time outside of the annual funding, and so that is why it is here in council. At this point of time, this is the only outstanding request for the event support fund, and in the new year, the council can give consideration with the remaining balance and the funding that has been carried forward as to whether we'll do another round of funding.
Second question is, how does it come through $5,000, to examples of similar events, Bury Two, and the Food and Wine Festival, which have $10,000 a lot?
Through you, Mr Mayor. We've, we've made a decision on $5,000. This is a new event. The Food and Wine Festival, for example, is well established, so the costs, particularly the logistical costs, are known. And I think this is a good way of introducing the event, having a look at the contribution that we're making without overcommitting ourselves in the first instance. So that's why we've arrived at the $5,000.
Councillor Young?
Um, thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm just a little bit confused about the, in the recommendations, contribute $5,000 towards the logistical costs. So does that mean that that $5,000 goes to those logistical costs that are on page 210? Renew high fencing electricity?
That's correct. That's through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Young. Yes, that's correct.
So it's not another $5,000 that goes to people or anything like that?
Through you, Mr Mayor, councillor Young. That is correct. So we will contribute a percentage of what is believed, based on the information provided by the event organiser, to be the logistical cost, but we won't pick up the entire cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. With the consultation, you noted a meeting on the 3rd of October, and then a presentation to council assembly on the 24th of October. I think, once again, I really like it if it says that it was a Zoom presentation. I just think that makes it accurate that the proposed, the event organiser did not come here. It was by Zoom. The $23,000 that's left over, why, why is that left over? Why don't we use it all and give it to the groups that take the time to put in their applications? So often we give them, you know, a third of what they've asked for, or, you know, I think to have $23,000 left, and then we're, you know, proposing these things that come in at the last minute. I, I just wonder what the community would think about, so.
Is there a question for Mr Hobbin and councillor Kelly?
Why event support fund is not all used?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I don't think I can speculate on the thinking of the individual members of the events support committee. All I can comment is that the committee members receive all of the relevant information about the request, and councillor Kelly. And councillor Kelly is quite correct that each event puts in quite detailed information. That is considered against the criteria and then the individual members of the events committee undertake a scoring process. They come together, they discuss it, uh and they collectively make decisions. And those decisions, uh in this instance, in this financial year, added up to that they were not going to contribute all of the funding. That is an individual choice, uh and on this occasion, they collectively came to that decision as well.
Thank you.
Will you part that committee, Mr Hobden?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, councillor Kelly. I was uh an observer on the committee and asked for any um relevant information uh as the members of the committee were going through and processing uh the applications.
Yeah, I've got a couple more. Um, it says on page twenty two, one, two, under options, um, councillors should consider some level of support. And then it says down the bottom, consideration should be given to a first year commitment. I don't know if it should, to me, sounds like we have to or that we must. I would like.
Point of all, I would, Mr Mayor, a couple of questions.
Yeah, councillor Kelly, can you get that question posted?
Could the terminology be um less instructive and more?
Councillor Kelly, is it relevant to the motion that's, that's actually potentially going to be put as, as to whether the report says?
I think the wording of a report is important because we read it as, as a report to instruct our decisions. Um.
So do you have a question for Mr Hobden?
Yeah, um, organisers indicated that they have an offer from another council of five to ten thousand. Um, do we know what council that is?
Through you, Mr Mayor, councillor Kelly. Now we're done.
No, thank you.
And then um with electricity, the organisers are seeking logistic support um for free of charge electricity. Um, I just noted that, would that be, it's unknown what that would cost. Is that unknown?
Uh, Mr Mayor, to councillor Kelly, that, that's correct. At this point of time, until the event is run one, uh that, that cost is unknown.
Yeah.
However, in um the council's contribution, if the organisers of the event want to utilise part of that funding to pay for the like electricity, that's their call.
Yep. And the last question was the date, Sunday the fifth.
Yes.
Um, decided to be a Sunday instead of a Saturday, um, May, like the, the programme looks like it's in quite a variety of dates actually across the year. Um, why did we choose May the fifth, Sunday, May the fifth?
Okay, so you, Mr Mayor, councillor Kelly, the organisers uh of the event are staging a number of events along the river.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they picked Swan Hill for the, the fifth of May. Yes, it is a Sunday and they are very mindful that on a Saturday, at that time of the year, there would be a lot of our community involved in other activities. Uh, sporting activities, et cetera, as family groups, and they may even be travelling out of um uh Swan Hill. So they were very mindful of that. Um, so they picked the Sunday event so that everyone could, if they wanted to attend the event, could. But as uh as I'd indicated, Mr Mayor, this is a part of a series of events that are coming down the river and ultimately end up, I think, in Wodonga. Uh, and there's an added incentive for people who participate in this event in Swan Hill to have, um, be involved in the final smoke-off in uh Wodonga. So it's just a, uh, it's the date that the organisers have selected in their calendar coming down the river.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think there's been enough questions. Do I have a motion from a councillor? Please.
I'll move, I have further recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Do I have a second? For that councillor Moore, thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, it's pretty well detailed and it is a good opportunity and exciting, exciting event to report this one here. In line with seven or eight others across the river, so it was good. Um, and while we do have twenty three, twenty five, twenty three thousand left over, we do have another community group that applied for that funding and that is scored. And that scoring and waiting is regularly available. God of all apologies to anyone who can follow that, I'm certainly agree by rating apply. So fully to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, councillor Moore?
Well, thank you, Mayor Ken. Yeah, look, uh, this has a lot of potential. Uh, this event, or this series of events, proposal on the money and I'm glad this owner could be part of it. Um, the main organisers, of course, assess uh the um potential for credit and uh putting Swan Hill on the map. Uh, it sounds like a great concept. Um, just as a side, the event support fund's criteria played on that committee. Um, it's a quite rigorous uh evaluation and scoring procedure to go through to get to the point of uh normally applicants uh applying for more than one project. But uh there's been a drop off through COVID and we haven't fully recovered. But it's a very rigorous project, uh process to go through. Uh, and uh I think at all times we end up in the right place. Uh, and of course, we wouldn't have any money over if we'd spent it all to consider uh late applications like this. So um another point that made about electricity, I actually didn't know we actually charged for electricity. I thought it was part of logistical support, but I can realise except that metering doubt, uh, the other stands and the sand shell and all of that too. Um, that's a new one on me, so I, I thought that was part of logistical support. Since we joined by that at a later date, we do actually charge a lot. Uh, but I fully support this proposal. Uh, another event, um, that clearly we can hopefully, uh, the locals will support and will bring people in from our town. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Are there any speakers against the motion? There's no speakers against the motion, then I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr Hobden. Thank you, Ms Hepple. Item two point ten, Domestic Animal Management Plan, twenty twenty three review. Ms Green, and welcome, Mr Revere. Very pleased you're down the back there, so thank you.
Congratulations, Mr Mayor, on your appointment.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the Domestic Animal Management Plan Review. Domestic Animal Management Plan twenty twenty two, twenty five was developed in accordance with section sixty eight A of the Domestic Animal Management Act nineteen ninety four. Under the act, councillors required annually to review its domestic animal management plan. Domestic Animal Management Plan twenty two, twenty five was adopted in November twenty twenty one. And this is the second annual review of the current plan. Plan states that under section sixty eight A, three of the act, council must review its domestic animal management plan annually and if appropriate amend the plan, provide Department of Jobs, Precincts and Regions Secretary with a copy of the plan and any amendments, and publish an evaluation of its implementation of the plan in its annual report. Domestic Animal Management Review twenty twenty three, detailed actions that have started, the actions that have been completed and the actions that will occur in twenty twenty four. Some of our achievements in the second year have been the emerging emergency management response. So during the October twenty twenty two flood event, council's regulatory services department aided seventeen displaced cats and dogs whose owners had to evacuate their homes. The animals were from the Gunawarashai council and the owners were staying at the Swan Hill Relief Centre. Some of the cats and dogs were housed at the Swan Hill Pound for nine weeks. This was a very stressful time for the displaced people and their pets. And the assistance provided by council staff was as follows. Volunteering to be on call to assist any animals that arrived at the relief centre after hours, transporting animals to the relief centre to the pound if the owners were unable to do so, facilitating multiple daily visits to the pound so owners could spend time with their pets, purchasing additional supplies and equipment to ensure animals were safe and well cared for, administering medication to one dog as required, providing owners with a substantial supply of pet food after their animals left the pound and developing a list of pet friendly accommodation services around the region, so owners and pets were not separated. During this time, staff dealt with a number of uh highly emotional and vulnerable people and have since completed mental health first aid training to improve their knowledge and skills in helping people in these types of stressful situations. Uh, seizure of excess animals in June twenty twenty three, council received a complaint about dogs attacking uh sheep. The investigation later found that the dog owner had forty dogs on his property. Dogs were kept in poor condition but were reasonably healthy. Seizure of the Kelby Crossbreed Dogs was a joint effort between council, RSPCA and Victoria Police. The owner fully cooperated on the day with thirty three dogs taken and rehomed by the RSPCA. Five dogs were surrendered to council and taken to the vet for assessment. Due to their poor health and behaviour, five of the dogs were euthanised. The owner kept two of the dogs and officers undertake monthly welfare checks to prevent the situation from occurring again. In two thousand and eighteen, the same owner was found to have a hundred and twenty dogs on his property in an adjoining municipality. Uh, proactive registration checks, the council, uh, the central animal records microchip database was cross-checked in October twenty twenty three. Fifty follow-up phone calls resulted in ten new animal uh registrations. The, uh, there were three hundred and ninety six new animal registrations in twenty twenty three, forty three more than in twenty twenty two. This may be attributed to twelve uh various media promotions that included newspaper articles, radio interviews, uh council website stories and social media posts. In twenty twenty three, consultation for cat confinement commenced. Uh, the question residents were asked by the Let's Talk platform was, do you think cats should always be contained to their owners' property? Seventy percent voted yes and thirty percent voted no. Survey will be put to residents later this year, so I'm hoping that'll go out shortly uh to gain further feedback on the twenty four hour cat curfew uh containment and the partial curfews, as well as mandatory cat desexing. A report will be provided to council in early twenty twenty four. Uh, there are no changes to the damp, sorry, no changes to the damp are required or recommended as a result of the review. And a copy of this report and the review will be sent to the relevant state government department and reported in council's annual report. And the recommendations are as listed.
Thank you, Darren. Very uh detailed report and I will take it as read. Um, before we go into any, any questions and further, we are nearly at five o'clock. So we require a motion if we are to continue for a thirty minute extension of time. Somebody move that?
Yes.
Councillor Kay, seconder?
I'll second up, but I may have to leave before five thirty.
Okay, we'll note that. Thank you. All those in favour? Carry. Thank you. Any uh, any burning questions for Mr Revere? Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
One question. Uh, in two thousand and twenty one November meeting, we had a third point to adopt in the danger and investigate options for intensive cat trapping program within the municipality and to report options back to council. Is that, what's the progress on that?
I can answer that. Um, look, apologies, we haven't reported back to council. We did undertake some uh cat trapping in some areas like near the railway station where it's known that there's uh maybe not feral but wild cats, not, not, not living with people but being fed by people. What we found was uh cat traps were either destroyed or um cats let out. Um, uh, and we also trialled some, uh, some of that in Robinvale as well. Um, we did catch some feral cats, but there is no longer a vet in Robinvale. So they had been brought to Swan Hill or Muljura to be euthanised. Um, we are just about back to full staff. Uh, we will be early in the year. So we're going to look at some other options and see what other councils are doing with feral cats to see if there's something we can do more of and report back to council next year.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I'll move the motion as per the recommendations.
Sorry, did you have a question, councillor Kelly or not?
Yes, I did.
I can still move it though, before the.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Still new at this, councillor Young. Uh, do I have a second for the, for the motion? Councillor Moore? Thank you. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
Am I going to be able to answer?
No, she can ask still ask the question after I've moved the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly, question?
Thank you, councillor Young. Um, I just had a question about um investigate options of establishing off-leash dog parks in other areas of the municipality. Um, so is that particularly in other pla, certain other places?
We, we did do some work uh before this, this Swan Hill one was opened um in Robinvale as well. Um, and potentially a small part, I had um the park, um, St Teneri Park in Robinvale could be set aside for a dog park as part of future planning or, or another location in Robinvale and potentially a second park in Swan Hill in the future as well.
Yep. And then the other one was um inspect nature reserves throughout the municipality to determine if dogs should be banned. I just wondered where that came from? Did that come from the department or?
Possibly talking about Nia Forest or something.
Yeah.
Not quite sure on that one.
Yeah.
We can certainly come back to you on that one, councillor Kelly.
Yeah, and I just had one more and just scrolling. Um, oh. Actually, no, that, that might be it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Young, we'd like to speak to your motion.
Um, yes, um, thanks very much for a very comprehensive report. It's um very good to see that we've got such a lot of work being done in that area. And having a dog myself, I think it's great to see that the dogs are actually looked after. So um that's about my, all my comments, okay?
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ken. First, congratulations on the work to get you on the flood. It was a very stressful time having to get around with great with um building elements, I suppose I got mis-screwed. Um, and uh, and I'm very grateful for that, very much, um, that was great what you did there. And um, and um, yeah, kind of that, we just, and everything else that's happened, it's fantastic. Uh, great to see, you know, the commercially responsible ownership, um, as, as always, rehoming and trying to keep these amazing to a sleep in them as, as we always do. Um, uh, it was one of the thing, uh, yeah, the ongoing investigations with, with dog parks and free people can exercise. And there are socialists in one in Swan Hill, he's a very, brings everybody together. And I'm really proud of the outcome out there and we can get one in Robinvale in an, in overtime, a second one in Swan Hill. So people don't have to travel as far, um, would be fantastic. So yeah, well done. And I'm glad to see that we don't have to make any, any changes to our, to our plan, which is good, it's fit for purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak against the motion? You want to speak against the motion?
No, that's not a hand up.
Okay.
That's a, a, and getting ready to speak for.
If there's no speakers against the motion, I will put the motion.
I've already spoken for the motion.
Yeah, if there's no speakers against the motion, I'll put the motion.
Can I not speak for the motion?
I'm, I'm u- using the rules as, as they're written, that um if there's no speakers against the motion, then the motion can be put.
Okay.
So I'm putting, uh, there's no speakers against, so I'll put the motion. Those in favour of the motion? Those against the motion? Motion's carried.
I was going to ask about that, um.
Thank you, Darren.
Dog barking procedure manual.
Item number two point one, one, petition, concerns in relation to the current state of Robinvale Retail and Business District. Mr CEO, this is yours.
Uh, I'll defer to the director of government planning to briefly talk to.
I'll hand it down.
Thank you, Ms Green.
Uh, yes, we received a petition from um the concerned members of the Robinvale Opportunity Shop about the uh condition of the CBD in Robinvale. Um, we've tried to summarise the issues raised by the petitioners and have come up with the general appearance, uh rubbish, footpath cleanliness, unkept shop fronts and the condition of the hotel. The report that you've got goes through each of those and outlines what council is doing um on a regular basis um and what, or what we're trying to do, particularly in relation to the hotel and the business windows. Uh, where we did have posters to put up in the windows where we offered to wash windows, didn't get a lot of traction. Uh, young Sarah persisted a lot to try and get phone calls, visiting sites, knocking on doors to try and get some of that happening. Um, the hotel council's been kept up to date with and that's outlined in this report as well. Where we're trying to uh get some development happening there. Um, and certainly Leah's team has outlined what they do in terms of pressure washing, footpaths, rubbish bins, those sorts of things, the assets in, in the public space. Um, the recommendation is that we uh could write to local business owners, encouraging them to plan and improve their shop fronts. Um, we can outline to the petitioners the work that council does um to uh try and. um, to, uh, try and keep the CBD clean. But it is really a joint responsibility of property owners, property tenants, council and of course the general public for not dropping rubbish. Um, certainly our staff in Robinvale have outlined that's a, that is a problem. They agree that that's a problem, um, with people dropping rubbish and not putting them in bins. Um, so the recommendation is, as I've outlined, that we write to the petitioners advising the current services provided by council and write to local businesses encouraging them to clean their shop fronts.
Thank you, Miss Green. Questions, councillor Kelly?
Um, I'm happy to move as recommended.
Move as per recommendation? Do I have a second, second up? Councillor Jeffrey, thank you. Do you wish to speak to that councillor Kelly?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yep, I'm really happy to receive this report. I think, um, the people who wrote them, who were good enough to write the petition and care so much about their civic space and the pride they take in it, um, they'd be pretty happy with this summary. Um, I see that in regards to point four about the hotel, yesterday there was an article on, on ABC Muldura Swan Hill digital, um, webs, website, um, about the hotel. I haven't actually read the article yet, but, um, it's, the heading is, Robinvale locals demand restoration of main square hotel destroyed by fire eight years ago. It says eight thousand. The interesting thing about it is that it says, um, eight thousand, um, sorry, my husband sent it to me. Eight thousand residents and the only pubs are burnt out ruined and the locals are sick of the sight of it. So it was interesting that ABC, um, says that Muldura, um, Robinvale's got eight thousand people. So that was, um, interesting. Yeah, so, um, this is a comprehensive report, I'm happy with that. And, um, yeah, thanks to the, um, staff for covering all those bases. Um, I would like to hopefully, um, go up as a council to Robinvale in the near future. Mister Mayor, if you could arrange, um, to maybe sit there in, uh, have our meeting there and tour the streets to, to talk about, um, the problems there and meet, meet with some of this, um, the leaders and representatives of the groups there, uh, as a team. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, just spoke, I, I really appreciate the petition and the response being put into it. Um, unfortunately, the council is pretty powerless in terms of how people present the front of their house or the front of their property. Uh, whether it's cleaning the windows or what material they're displaying in the windows, et cetera. So, um, the pub we know is an issue unless it's structurally unsound. The council's limited to what they can do to get the owner to do something to the site. People do have things which are, so the council is tempted to do anything. So, um, appreciate the petition and support the response provided, thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers against the motion?
I would want to step forward.
If no one, if no, if there's no speakers against the motion, I will put the motion to meeting. All those in favour? Those against? Motion's carried, thank you. Just in the interest of time councillor McKay?
That's all, I do want to say that.
Uh, item two point one two, spoons Riverside lease variation, community engagement, Ms, Mister Patat?
Thank you, uh, Mister Mayor. Congratulations on your election as a mayor.
Thank you.
As the council. Uh, Mister Mayor, this report is to inform the council of the submission received during the community engagement process undertaken for the proposed variation to the existing lease of spoons Riverside Cafe. Council, uh, on, uh, twenty-second of September twenty twenty-three gave notice under section one one-five of the Local Government Act twenty twenty and of its intention to vary its lease agreement with current tenant for the premises known as spoons Riverside Cafe. One twenty-five Monash Drive, Swan Hill, inviting submissions on the matter. The community engagement process ended on twelfth, at twelve P M Friday twentieth October twenty twenty-three and we received one submission, uh, from, uh, MS Jolene Williams. The submission is appended with the report, Mister Mayor. Uh, the council has two options, one to vary the lease as detailed in the report. Uh, second option is not to proceed with the, uh, proposed lease variation. The recommendation is that, uh, Mister Mayor and councillors, uh, that, uh, one run a variation to lease to add two further terms, term option of five years each and a further four-year term, uh, for the lease to end on thirtieth June twenty forty-eight. Uh, second, uh, number two, uh, option to provide a, officers to provide formal response to the submission to MS Jolene. Any questions, Mister Mayor?
Thank you, Mister Patat. I'll take the report, uh, as read. Are there any questions?
Happy to move this.
Happy to move as per recommendation?
I have a question.
Councillor Kay, question?
From the report, which is a little vague, uh, it seems to indicate that we don't have a policy about, um, how long potential leases can have before we vary. Is it correct that we give them one, one, one thing to one person and one thing to someone else?
Yeah, we did not have a policy when we were dealing with, uh, MS Jolene Williams, uh, Mister Mayor, but now we do have a policy.
And the policy is?
Policy, uh, we have, uh, we do not have a timeframe. So anyone, uh, who, uh, has got a leased valid lease with the council can request for variation on the very first day of, uh, the lease commencing of the lease.
Okay.
But at that point in time, we did not, so, uh, yes. We realised that there was a problem in, uh, dealing with, uh, MS Jolene and we went ahead and developed a policy and procedure.
Thank you, Mister Patat. Councillor Kelly, do you still wish to move the motion?
Yeah.
As per recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Second up, councillor Moore? Uh, councillor Kelly, you wish to speak?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this is as per a decided, um, disgust and it was good to get a submission. I think when you do a submission process, I always like if we get at least one submission because it means people are reading what we put out. Um, this one is a difficult one in that, um, Jolene felt that she wasn't given the same, um, consideration. Um, I think we've attempted to, um, just, uh, describe why that, um, appeared that way. Um, you think, there's some things that are messy, you think, oh, that's over, but some, sometimes they rear there yet again. Um, which just shows us that the, the more clear we are, the more, the more our policies and procedures are in, um, good and thorough, uh, then we prevent problems like this. So I think this is just, um, procedural at this stage, except to say that, um, with Christmas coming around, um, I would love to, um, have some sort of event at spoons. Council, uh, go and enjoy that lovely location. But I'm not going to move the motion to that.
Thank you councillor.
Effect.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak?
Uh, yeah, look, briefly, uh, common sense, um, uh, extension to approve an operator, um, to the benefit of the community down there, uh, they extend their hours and opening days, uh, over time as they get staff and, uh, attributes returned.
Thank you. Has anyone wish to speak against the motion? There's no speakers against the motion, I'll put the motion, that were in favour? None against? Motion is carried. Thank you councillors.
Mister Mayor, before we start, I do need to go get kids. Fair enough, you're on my side.
Thank you, can we note, do we have a motion for that or we just note that? Just, you can note that? Please, councillor Jeffrey has left the meeting at five fifteen. Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Uh, two point five, February quarterly review of financial performance and financial position to thirtieth September twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll take the report as read, but Mister Patat, if there's things that you'd like to highlight, um, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mister Mayor. The summary of income and expenditure and balance sheet for three months ended thirtieth of September twenty twenty-three are included with this report. The, uh, net favorable variation for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is reported at eight hundred and three, uh, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, Mister Mayor. The, uh, the budget major variations to the budget as of thirtieth September twenty twenty-three are also explained by the way of notes on the attached report. And, uh, I, uh, the recommendation is that, uh, council notes, uh, that the anticipated end of financial year results of eight hundred and three, seven hundred and seventy-four is better than the adopted budget surplus of seventy-nine thousand and twenty-eight dollars at this stage. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mister Patat. Any questions councillors? Councillor Kelly?
Uh, my question was in regards to item number, page two ninety-four, where it says Murray River Group of Councils, uh, ten thousand dollars unfavorable. Um, member councils, I won't read it, what it says. Um, can you explain that, where that ten thousand dollars came from?
The, uh, the, uh. So Murray River Group of Councils met at Yarra Wonga, uh, I think it was September. And, uh, the day before it was announced that legislation was coming out to, uh, look at the socio-economic impacts of water buybacks. The group wanted to look at a, uh, a media campaign to increase awareness of the impact of buybacks to local communities and was asked to provide or submit or be part of funding, uh, advertisements and putting notices into the community and to talk to politicians about the impacts of water buybacks. Um, the councillors attending were asked to make that commitment and that's what we're looking at there today.
Yep, so my question was, where did it come from? What part of the budget, like where, where has that come from?
It's come from the operational budget and it's from the surplus.
Yep, so which councillor, which councillors, you, you mean our delegate?
Yes.
Who was?
On the day it was councillor King.
Yep. So is that the way the Murray River Group of Councils usually behaves? As in it just asks for money and one delegate?
Usually not councillor, but because there was a sense of urgency at that time, uh, the councils were asked to consider, uh, contri- contributing and, uh, and that's what, uh, was agreed to on the day.
Yep, and are we going to get a report on, on how that was spent?
Uh, wasn't planning on it, but we, we, we were going to get a report on the effectiveness or the reach of the, the campaign.
Yep.
Um, so we are talking about that with the Murray River Group of Councils at the moment. You know, what was the circulation, where did the, where did the reporting go? If that's, if that's what goes on, yes.
And there's no, um, like that, when was that in October, did you say?
September.
September, September, October, somewhere there.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it have been appropriate for you to bring that to the councillors to, um, verify or tick off? Or even inform us that it was, that it happened?
Um, a councillor, it, it was operational, but I, I thought I had brought it to the councillors in assembly to explain that there would be a campaign. We talked about the time that staff had put into the buybacks campaign. We talked about, um, uh, what, uh, our comms, uh, engagement officer was involved with. Uh, we have actually discussed it, council, yeah.
But you didn't, you didn't mention ten thousand dollars?
I, I don't remember that, sorry.
Yeah, would it have been appropriate to mention that, like?
It's an operational budget, so.
Councillor Kelly, it is, it's within operational limits of the CEO to commit that money.
Okay.
It's an operational expense.
Yep, so could that, could that be done to other, other delegated groups such as, uh, similar to that? Could just pull ten thousand dollars out to use?
If I could provide some clarification, um, because I was acting, um, as the mayor on, on that occasion, uh, what we committed to was within the operational limits, but also, uh, was reinforcing an adopted position and adopted, uh, adopted position of council. So it's not like it was a commitment that was made outside the ordinary business, uh, of council. Uh, as you recall, there was a, um, there was a motion, uh, put forward and a resolution passed at, at council with respect to water buybacks. Um, so this, uh, funding, if you like, to this campaign, um, was essentially, uh, supports that position of council. So it's not like it's something that was just, um, oh, that sounds like a good idea, let's do this. It's actually supporting a, uh, an adopted resolution of council.
Yeah, but, uh, that would be, um, in-house advocacy, rather this has gone to, um, an advocacy group outside of council. The council is a delegate on. I would just think, um, a bit more transparency and, and, um, accountability would be better.
I, I support the CEO in that it, it was discussed, um, at a council assembly after that, following that, that meeting.
That the ten thousand dollars was discussed?
Again, I don't know of the specific details to discuss, but we're, it was definitely discussed, um, that we were participating in a campaign with the Murray River Group of Councils, um.
Absolutely.
A joint effort.
I remember that definitely, but I don't remember ten thousand dollars being used. I mean, um, councillor Moore before was flabbergasted and.
Councillor Young?
I'd like to move a motion that we accept this.
Noises about.
As per the recommendations, I'd like to move a motion that we accept the recommendation.
Do I have a second up for the motion? Councillor Moore, councillor? Thank you. Councillor Young, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, I think, um, it's, a lot of work's been put into this budget and what we're actually talking about at the moment is acceptance of the budget. So, um, I think that's all we need to really discuss.
Thank you, councillor Moore?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank for the work you've done, Mister Patat here. Um, what, it, it, it swings and roundabouts, ups and downs, um, but we're on the right side of it all and, um, we hope it continues that way. Thank you.
Any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Carried, thank you. Uh, item two point one four, council plan KSI, September progress report twenty twenty-three. Mister Patat, again, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm Olivia Serra, my colleague, uh, Miss Morris in this, uh, report, uh, Mister Mayor. This report is the first quarter progress update of the council performance against the council plan twenty-one, twenty, twenty-five. The period reported is from first July twenty twenty-three to thirtieth September twenty twenty-three. The quarterly progress report provided, uh, and, uh, as an attachment offers a summary of progress against four council plan areas, livability, prosperity, harmony and leadership. The intent of this report is to give councillors and the community the confidence that the council is on track to meet its published commitment. The summary of the progress made on this plan is reported on page two nine nine and three hundred of, uh, the agenda and the detailed report is on page three hundred and three onwards. I'll take this as report, uh, that is read. The options are that, uh, the, uh, adopt, uh, the progress report of the council's performance against the council plan for the reporting period of first July twenty twenty-three to thirtieth September twenty twenty-three as presented. Second option is, uh, adopt the progress report of council's performance against the council plan for reporting period of first July twenty twenty-three to thirtieth, uh, September twenty twenty-three with amendments. Recommendation, Mister Mayor, that the council adopt, uh, the first quarter council plan progress report of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as presented. Happy to take questions, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Patat. Any, uh, questions on this agenda item? Councillor Kelly?
Um, just two point one, point two point one, uh, that established terms of reference, develop annual plan with agribusiness advisory committee. Um, I just wondered why we're doing that. Um, the agribusiness advisory committee, I don't know if it had lapsed or was in recess, but, um, I just would like an explanation of why we're resurrecting that, um, and ramping it up again. What, what does it, um, achieve? Um.
Got your question, so just what, what's the purpose of that committee? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, it's another question.
Councillor Moore, representative, yes?
Um, um, agriculture's largest committee of.
Sorry?
The agribusiness advisory committee, uh, which represents, um, agriculture producers throughout the municipality, uh, which contributes one point five billion dollars to our economy. Now, um, since Mural, Mural Sholz has left, Mural Sholz was the driver of that committee. And, um, since then, there has been a, a decline in numbers up to a point, but it's been reinvigorated. We've got new members and, uh, we're continuing, um, to discuss, um, issues relating to our agribusiness and agriculture community. Um, honestly, it's a very relevant committee. Um, look, if it, uh, ends up in decline, it's, it's surely, um, it will fall, but, uh, we, we, we need to have contact with, um, the people who, uh, um, produce the vast, vast majority of the economic wealth and the jobs in this municipality and we need to hear from them. That's, that's why it's there and, uh, sorry, it didn't, that's why, and that was a big one.
You happy with that response, Mister Patat?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Young?
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, many years ago, I was one of the instigators of the.
the Agribusiness Committee and over the years it's done some amazing things and provided a lot of drive and enthusiasm for areas of agribusiness. It started off just as a, basically a farming community, then it went to financial advisers, different people from all different sorts of organisations. And I just think it's an organisation, it did go into a bit of decline when we had Covid, but it's good to see it up and going again and doing some good things.
Thank you. So to answer your question?
Sure, I just think we need to review why and what all the committees are about.
To be fair, that's, that's coming to a future council assembly, so now's not the time to discuss that because that's coming to a future council assembly.
Yeah.
And those committees will be decided at the December meeting.
I have another question about.
Further question on the report? You got a question on the report?
Yeah. It says here that Manang is on hold or, it doesn't say that, it actually says, it doesn't mention Manang in regards to.
Can you point to the?
Work, four point one, point two point four, work with town reps to better plan and deliver projects. Just wondering why the Manang town, community plan is not, because there's no other community plans are being supported at this stage. Page three hundred. It does say, we'll review budget next year to determine if support for other communities is possible.
Sorry, I can't see where it says Manang is on hold.
It doesn't say Manang is on hold, it just says, it mentions Naya, Boga and Ultima.
Yep.
It doesn't mention any other. It just says, no other community plans are being supported at this stage. Well, I was at the Manang meeting the other day and they think they're getting, they're doing their plan, so I just wanted to know why some towns are.
I'll just, through you, through you, Mr Mayor, this was for the previous quarter, so this was the update at the time, I guess, that we got from officers.
Oh, okay.
The plan, if it's currently being under review, that will probably go down in the next progress report for the next quarter as an update.
Yeah. Yep, sorry. Yep, that's true. I keep forgetting that this is.
Yeah, go back.
Yep. The other one was the next one below that, review council's advocacy strategy on an annual basis. I think that could probably come to council soon because I haven't been part of reviewing that advocacy document yet. I haven't been a councillor for a year though, so possibly I've missed that, but I think council laws should be part of reviewing the advocacy strategy altogether.
Yeah, thank you. I'll discuss with the CEO. It's been on an as required basis previously, so typically prior to Elga or prior to any meetings with parliamentarians and whatnot, so just to make sure that position's clear. But I'll discuss with the CEO whether that comes to the council assembly at a future date, sometime in the new year.
Thank you, Mayor.
No further questions. I'll ask for a motion. Councillor McPhee, do you wish to?
Yeah, I've got the recommendation.
Thank you. Second, councillor Kelly. Councillor McPhee, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Oh, just quickly, as you see, most of the projects have commenced. There's very few that have not started.
That it? Thank you, councillor Kelly.
No, I'm, I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. Any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Councillors, we're at five thirty. I'm going to consult with the CEO and items two point one five, two point one six and two point one seven, there are no specific actions required for those resolutions. So I'm going to ask if anybody would like to move a motion to defer those agenda items to the December meeting because there's no action, no specific actions required for any of those motions.
Yes, I'm very happy to.
Councillor MacKay? Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Young? Thank you. Wish to speak to that or?
I think that sensible management, it's been the big agenda with lots to discuss and that is no problem at all whatsoever with deferring them to the December meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Young, do you wish to speak to that?
That's fine.
Those, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. So we'll move on to, sorry, we're at five thirty. Move an extension of time for another half an hour. Thank you, councillor Moore. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Kelly, those in favour? Motion, no, it's carried. Thank you. We'll continue. Item three on the agenda, officer report for noting, Mr CEO.
Just so I'm sure, Mr Mayor, on when the motion, except there's only one time of use.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee? Have a second for that? Councillor Moore? Mr Speaker? Thank you. Those in favour of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Item, so that was item three.
Four point one, four point two.
Sorry, four point, sorry, that was four point one, four point two, sorry.
That's right.
So was that for four point one or four point two was?
Four point one.
Thank you. Item four point two, council assemblies record of attendance.
I'll move.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Second that, councillor McPhee, thank you. Wish to speak to that? Councillor Kelly, no, thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Motion's carried. Thanks very much. Item five, we have no notice of motion. Do we have any foreshadowed items, councillors?
Can I just ask, could I foreshadow a motion now? Does that mean, if I foreshadow a motion, does that mean it comes to the next meeting? Is that what foreshadowing means?
Foreshadowing a motion's usually something later in that meeting, is my understanding.
Hmm.
That's the way the governance rules.
Yep.
Read. So if it's a motion for the next meeting, it doesn't have to be foreshadowed. As such.
I, I was going to foreshadow a motion about protecting renters from houses in the farming zone, but I'll hold off on that.
I think we, yeah, we can talk about that and.
Yep.
May come to a future, future meeting. Thank you. Are there any urgent items not included in the agenda, councillors? If not, we'll skip over that. Item number eight, to consider and order on councillor reports. Councillor Young, would you like to go first?
I would move on in here. I think there is, I would have been tomorrow.
No worries. You've saved some time. That's good. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, a few things happening this last month. Item the tenth, AFS risk meeting, discussion, the nature of risk and how it's evolving, highest risk areas, creating old risk and emerging risk. Twenty third, tenth, Agribusiness Advisory Committee meeting. Twenty fourth, tenth, Grant Commission meeting. Twenty eighth, tenth, coffee with the councillor, with councillor Jeffrey, who's had to go home, Chris Children, at the Nai West Balls Club, which was very interesting and worth exercising. Certainly the eleventh, Mally Regional Innovation Centre in Mildurif with the release of the regional drought consultation report there, which is mostly agreed. I think I got a copy out to all councillors. Thirteenth, eleventh, Swan Hill Clontarf Academy Awards, that was a great evening, great to see some achievements there and they're kicking, really kicking some balls. And of course, yesterday, Housing Summit, which I think was really a great success. Going on the success of Robbenvale when we thought nothing much happened, a hell of a lot should have come out of this one at Swan Hill. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just quickly, I'll tell you a number of, a couple of highlights I mentioned. Twenty first of the tenth, the Fiji Community Day celebrations. It's great to see the amount of Fijians that are in our community and they are growing. They certainly want to maybe get involved in a bit of rugby around the area, so we may have to talk to the Fijian community in the future. And obviously, the other thing I wanted to mention was the Young Writers Award, which is a great event, young rugby. It's amazing how many young writers we do have. So that's all the rest is beyond the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Pleased to see you went to a Engineers Country Weekend Dinner as well. So I can understand this a little bit better. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, my report's there with Sharon. Leisure Centre Advisory Committee meeting, Food for All Garden, food garden event, Manang Tang Improvement Group meeting, met with the EPA, Loden Murray Power Hub, planning meeting, Swan Hill Cancer Foundraiser at the regular annual movie festival, Ultima Progress Association AGM, chaired that for them, Colty with the councillor, Beats at the Bend, Boundary Bend. And just from that, I wanted to say what one of the residents up there asked me to do, which was to put up a, to pass a vote of thanks or give thanks to M DAS for funding the Robbenvale pool entry fees for the season. She wanted, she wanted, she thought that it was appropriate to thank M DAS for doing that.
M VAC, Maly Valley Average.
Thank you.
So that funded free entry to the pool to, for, for the whole community. So people make a notice of motion to say thank you because no one has actually recognised. Not that it's anyone's problem.
Just in the interest of time, can we wrap up?
So that's some reporting from that. Russell Wilson Performance Remembrance Day Ceremony, I was there on behalf of the mayor to lay a wreath, which was really great, moving event. I went to a talk by an author, Judy Ryan, who wrote a book called You Talk, We Die, about the stigma around drug addiction and the need for injecting, safe injecting rooms and a really good turn up to that. And that'll be, the Housing Summit, just really good to meet Lenka Thompson, who's been appointed for the Loden Murray Housing Officer. It was really good that she was there yesterday and agree with councillor Moore that it was a good event. I'm sure we'll talk more about that. But also just to note how excellent the bridge decision, the money to, has been kept for the ninety day infrastructure review fell in our favour and to keep, for that to be kept was wonderful and good media about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly?
Sure. Went to the Swan Hill Housing Summit, Nai District Action Group meeting, Boundary Bend Progress Association, Beats at the Bend, Colty with the councillor and the Remembrance Day Celebration. I'd also like to thank councillor Kelly for meeting Minister King when she was in Canberra and getting our advocacy document from our CEO and advocating very well for the bridge funding. Well done. Thinking on the run.
My pleasure.
Righto. My report is there tabled. The main thing I'd like to highlight is I attended a Waste Expo at the Melbourne Convention Centre. I had some discussions with the Director of Infrastructure around that. There's some really innovative stuff around waste regarding conversion of waste into energy. So it solves two problems in one and I'm finalising my report to, to give councillors just as a brief report, but very interesting time and highly recommend that some of the council's waste staff attending for future events. So, thank you. And we'll take councillor Jeffrey's report as being tabled in the minutes.
Just, Mayor King, who, who put that on that Waste Expo? Was that on M A V or?
What are they called? Recycling Victoria?
Just standing in the middle of Victoria.
Just standing in the middle of Victoria, sorry. Just standing in the middle of Victoria.
Excellent.
All right, that concludes the normal agenda, councillors. Can I have a motion that we move in camera to consider my report? Councillor McPhee, second to councillor Moore, all in favour? Carried. Thank you very much. We'll just stay, remain silent for a moment, councillors, while we move in camera. Okay, thank you, councillors, members of the public for your attendance via in-person or live stream. We'll close the meeting before we move into camera. Thank you.